All right, I'll ask everyone to take your seats, please. It is 7 o'clock. No bell for me, sorry. Thank you. Sego ani buju andio wachea queque. As the deputy mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. Council was just meeting in committee of the whole closed meeting, and we discussed a few different items. We had a report on collective bargaining with IATSE, Local 471, two personnel matters regarding an identifiable individual, those being a human resource and organization development update and an organizational staffing update. Can I please have a motion to rise from committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting?
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Glenn. The Council, Counselor Glenn's not here, sorry. By Counselor Chinani. The Council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have an addendum we need to add. So there is a delegation request. We've got a motion of condolence. There's an amendment to clause 2 in report 20, some miscellaneous business and some communications. Can I have a mover in a second or to approve the addendum, please? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Tozo, seconded by Counselor Glenn. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Are there any declarations of potential pecuniary interest? Seeing none, moving on. We are on to delegations. So our first delegation is Joseph Dowzer. He's the chair of the Kingston Area Taxi Commission, who will appear before council to speak to clause 3 of report number 20 received from the chief administrative officer with respect to update Kingston and Area Taxi Licensing Commission and Accessible Taxi Program. Mr. Dowzer, you're welcome to come out. Just as a reminder, delegations tonight, you have five minutes to speak, followed by questions from council. Counselors, reminder, you have two questions if you like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you and through you, deputy mayor. Good evening, deputy mayor, of course, counselors and staff. As chair of the Kingston Area Taxi Commission, I stand before you to provide context and highlights to the countless positive evolutionary transformations of the taxi commission, but most importantly, our dedication and commitment to matters of accessibility for our vulnerable citizens. I truly hope that you, that our video that was shared with council provided a visualization to these changes and to our mandate, safe, reliable, accessible service. It has been an enlightening journey of growth and development for the taxi commission, and through this, our relationships with stakeholders have been revitalized and renewed, and partnerships have been forged that transcends boundaries. Our technological renaissance brought forth state-of-the-art systems and operational standards. Our introduction of enforcement officers and public access to taxi and TNC validation apps ushers in unprecedented levels of safety and fairness, and we've implemented processes that safeguards communications, interactivity, and community involvement from and within the industry and public. Notably, we introduced and initiated, industry group health benefits available to all industry members and their families, providing access to services and higher standards of good health that would otherwise be unavailable to our ambassadors. Now, I could speak at great length about the numerous progressive changes we've accomplished, though to do so within the five-minute time span, I will say for now, welcome to the 22nd century. Respecting matters of accessibility, the KATC strategically shifted its focus on such, which ultimately led to the creation and empowerment of a dedicated accessible committee with the sole mandate to provide barrier-free access for all to transportation services. We embrace this mandate and enshrined it into our bylaws, clearly stating that the KATC will maintain an open partnership through consistent bilateral open communication with the MAAC and stakeholders, including members of the accessible community. As discussed at the last meeting of the MAAC, the need for reliable and available transportation services for our accessible community is paramount. The KATC acknowledges this and understands fully that the availability of accessible transportation, which serves our growing accessible community, is dependent upon the number of licensed accessible vehicles in operation and licensed operators. By this, we have set a goal. Our commitment to this community to have 25%, that's 25% of the taxicab fleet be accessible by 2030, providing for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, availability and service. We have a plan, and that plan mirrors much of the accessible program already underway in partnership with Loyalist Township and through communications with the CAO and the CFO. Our plan to bring available accessible services to our vulnerable citizens was briefed, including the allocation of a significant portion of the TNC fees to be directed towards accessible services. And through this, without impact to the taxpayer pool, we expeditiously bring our goal to fruition, to provide barrier-free access for all to transportation services. And in short, to summarize, the KATC is renewed, revitalized, and at the beginning of our new journey, a journey towards a safer, more accessible, and inclusive transportation service. We are ready, so come, be part of our journey. It's a way smoother ride. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Counselor Tozo, you have two.
Thank you, deputy mayor, through you. So two questions, because that's all I'm allowed. First question is, when you talk about accessible vehicles, can you just talk about some of the features that these accessible vehicles have?
Okay, excellent question and through you, deputy mayor. Accessible vehicles are, for example, let's take a standard minivan, as anyone would have, let's say a Dodge Caravan, for example. Part of the accessibility to convert that to an accessible van would require the installation of either a lift or a ramp, but also the safety harnesses and equipment within the vehicle that sort of changes the design of it, because, for example, the structures that hook into, for safety, into the ground or the floorboards of the vehicle are also strapped to the frame of the vehicle. So therefore, it ensures that the individual that is riding in an accessible taxi is protected from harm during an accident and whatnot. I'm using the worst-case scenario on there. But nonetheless, what defines an accessible taxi is the availability to lift, ramp, or provide safe and secure access to an individual of a disability or accessibility concern.
Thank you. And second question, I'm assuming that these drivers have additional training above and beyond to help people with accessibility issues? Could you describe that training?
Excellent, thank you. And again, through you, deputy mayor. Great question, counselor. With the current training that we have right now, we do have two tiers of training for our drivers. The first tier is a regular taxi driver, which is the rules of the road, the rules of the bylaws, and the safe, reliable service aspect of our mandate. To become an accessible taxi driver license, there's another tier that has to be accomplished on top of that. And as that training, it shows sensitivity training, the recognition that not all disabilities are visible, the recognition in order to provide the proper services and care for an individual that could be in distress during the ride. So that level is the second tier. As we move into the future, we are working in partnership with the AODA to bring online training that provides provincial certification for future endeavors that also allows them to carry into other avenues of their workforce.
Thank you, and terrific work. Thank you.
Counselor Hassan.
Thank you, deputy mayor, and through you. I remember that I was part of the taxi commission back in 2014, if I'm remembering correctly. And that was the first year we launched accessible taxi at that time. It was a very challenging time that time. It was too much fight. The companies don't want to add accessible taxi, and then there was so, so much going on. So I witnessed those challenges at that time, but we was able to, as a taxi commission, to put two or three number plate out there at that time with the one owner only. How many numbers we have now? And are we going to have the same challenge? Or no, we have more people who are willing to take those accessible plates to provide service?
Excellent question, and through you, deputy mayor. To answer that question in short, I am familiar with the challenges that you were speaking with with regards to 2014. As we took this project on, we had to familiarize ourselves through all the hurdles that, of course, you had to jump through and whatnot. And as we progressed through time, I'm sure you're aware that the bylaw number three was created, which was specific to accessible services and accessible transportation. Part of that was that a certain number of plates can be issued per year. However, the commission has passed and carried motions to allow an exception to the rule about the number of plates regarding accessible taxis. Should a plate holder wish to be assigned an accessible taxi, or taxi plate, we have no issue doing that. The proper procedures and steps serve to be applied. So there has been a tremendous amount of interest in individuals moving to that route. To the past, you are correct, there were two plates that expanded to four plates that expanded to six, and it maintained that level for several years. Currently, right now, we do have 12 licensed plates that have been issued, of which only five are in operation, as of course, these individuals are working to secure vehicles and standards to the accessible standard. And we have currently, I'm sorry, I had this number just reflecting to it, we have 19 accessible drivers that are fully licensed and trained to serve the community's needs.
And the second question, again echoing Counselor Tozo's question, is, once we issue those plates and we provide the training to the drivers, do you have, or you will have, any mechanism in place to have a check and balance on that training? Because every year, the new requirement would be required to fulfill the service, and I just want to make sure that you will have some kind of mechanism in place that where, once a year, or no, once every two years, they retrain those driver for those new bylaws or new requirement for the accessible vehicles?
And through you, deputy mayor. Thank you for the question. With, so part of the changes in the Kingston Area Taxi Commission is we moved from the standard badge system, which was just one badge for everything. We separated the badge into an ID badge and a taxi driver's license, actual physical license, as you had seen in the video there. On the back of that license clearly indicates if that driver is AODA-trained or accessible-trained. It says, it's signified by the word yes. And below that is a certification date. That date is when they have to come in and recertify through testing, which is the bare minimum of three years in order to continue on with their accessible license. So to answer your question in short, yes, the checks and balances are there, and yes, they do have to continuously improve upon their training each term that their certification comes due in order to facilitate the new laws, the new rules, any new nuances that come back in so that they are at the pinnacle start point of the standard.
Counselor Hymas.
Thank you, and through you, deputy mayor. I was reviewing the report, and I noticed we've received as a package the financials for, the audited financials for 2019 and 2020, and then we have the budget laid out for 2024. There seems to be a gap there. I'm just wondering if you can enlighten me a little bit, does the commission still get audited every year? And do you publicize those audited results?
And through you, deputy mayor. Yes, we do. To answer your question, yes, we do get audited every year. We do submit our financial paperwork to the accountant to explain the gap. In 2021, the commission underwent significant transformational changes, a lot of infighting, a lot of back and forth, and I'm only using that as a reference point. We had a strong turnover of staff, which of course led to disconnects in the processes and whatnot, and a very steep learning curve. As chair, I came in in September of 2021, and as we know with the committees, a lot of them all say the learning curve is extremely sharp. I brought a bunch of my business background into there, whereas normally, we would just submit our financials to the accountant, and they would sort it out. Whereas in this case, we put it all together, and then the accountant finalizes it. One of the major concerns that we did discover is that we didn't have access to many of the appropriate levels required for financial reporting, CRA, MOF, Ministry of Finance, sorry, WSIB, et cetera, et cetera. Now that we have obtained that access and provided the third-party access to our accountant, this process should take relatively shorter time. Our accountant has assured us that he is working diligently on it. To give a good estimate, a safe estimate, 2021 should be completed by mid-March, with 2022 to be followed immediately preceding after, and 2023 to be followed immediately preceding after that.
Sounds like you're working through your due diligence. Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dowzer.
Thank you.
Our next delegation, we have Ashley Perna. So you are welcome to be here, but if you're going to make noise and interrupt council, I'm going to have to call a recess. So this is the one warning I can give, and then I have to call a recess. So, you know, we would love for you to stay, but we do have a requirement for quiet. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to call a 15-minute recess. So it is 7:16, so we will meet back here at 7:31. Thank you.
We're gonna start, folks.
Okay, everybody. Thanks for your patience. So we're going to be changing things around just a little bit in the interest of helping our delegations everybody move. So we will be coming back to those registered delegates. We still have two left.
Which Wendy should we call?
I'm calling the box.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to see, are there any other delegates that counselors are looking to move to bring tonight? Counselor Osterhoff.
I believe that's already in queue. Ms. James.
So because we've had to make a change to our format, we don't have the ability to put the motions on the screen. Counselor Osterhoff and Counselor Bohm, we're looking to move a motion to have Mark Brule from Homestead speak to clause 1, report 22 from Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you. And just a reminder, it takes two-thirds votes to add a delegate. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Are there any other delegate additions? Counselor Chinani.
Like to move the Jordan Morelli.
Okay. Jordan Morelli, do we have a seconder? Counselor Ridge. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, that's carried. Any other delegates? Counselor Glenn?
The ones that we sent forward.
Yeah, I will help with that again, because we don't have the ability to put them up on the screen. There are a couple. The first one is, this is moved by Counselor Glenn and seconded by Counselor Ridge, and it is to allow Julian Mallett Hill, again, to speak to the report from Administrative Policies Committee on residential rental licensing.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
And next, we have Tony Few from the Queens Graduate and Professional Students Society, I think it is, to speak to the same report, residential rental licensing.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Dylan still. Yes, and then Dylan Reed Davies, again, to speak to the Administrative Policies Rentsland Licensing. And that's Glenn and Ridge as well.
Got it. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Any other delegates? Okay, that looks like everybody. So do we have Ashley available? Or we will come back to her sheet number two. So let's move on. We're going to have Lindsey Foster. Will appear before council to speak to clause 1 of report number 22, this week from Admin Policies Committee with respect to residential rental licensing, as amended. Lindsey, you have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left, and counselors can ask questions when you're done.
Thank you. You can hear me fine?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. On behalf of the Kingston Rental Property Owners Association, I would like to thank counselors and staff who have truly engaged with both landlords and tenants over the last few months to better understand the state of rental housing in the city. We feel like we've been heard, and that is not always the case in any political arena. Most counselors attended the Administrative Policies Committee meeting on January 26 and heard what our members had to say, but I will take this opportunity to emphasize a few key points. The pandemic took an already fragile landlord and tenant board system and broke it into a million pieces. This fueled an extremely divisive us-versus-them relationship between landlords and tenants. Added to that, interest rate hikes, higher property taxes, insurance rates, material costs, inflationary pressures, small landlords with one to four units are struggling to cover basic costs. There are so few incentives to provide rental housing. While the numbers vary, it's estimated that small landlords provide over half of the rental housing in the city. Over the past couple of years, so many have given up and sold. Many of those properties are now owner-occupied, which further chips away on an already low vacancy rate. We understand the objectives before council tonight, take steps to ensure safe and legal units, build a database of the city's rental housing, improve and enhance existing property standards bylaws. We believe all of this can be achieved with existing city resources. That said, option one, which is the recommendation of the AP Committee, has the potential to further meet these goals. Options two and three that involve licensing would have devastating effects on already stressed rental market. In the city's own survey, both tenants and landlords identified housing affordability as their top concern. Licensing would simply blow away rental affordability, while a registry would have fewer damaging effects. We can all agree that the city needs a refresh of the property standards bylaws to enhance enforcement on properties with repeated violations. There also needs to be a better mechanism in place to streamline the complaints process. This can be done with option one. The rental registry recommended in option one is intended to provide data. The city wants to plan for future housing initiatives. To be clear, the city already has access to that information and needs only to draw existing data from its own taxation, utilities, building, and property standards departments, along with MPAC, to build a rental inventory database. If option one is chosen without a mechanism to incentivize rental property owners, the city's registry is sure to be full of holes. It would need to be structured as a low-fee or no-fee collection of basic information to ensure few additional costs are passed along to tenants and encourage compliance. That compliance piece is crucial consideration. Other municipalities have experienced a reluctance to register by landlords who are renting units that are not legal according to zoning bylaws or building codes. The red flags start flying when the city says it will work with owners to bring their properties into compliance. The reality, significant cost for the landlord to remedy a non-compliance issue that is often not a safety issue. These units may be perfectly safe, but they may be contained in a building zoned as a single-family residential. Or in the case of 100-year-old buildings, the ceiling heights, for example, might not meet current codes. To further avoid reducing the rental supply, the city needs to facilitate and encourage illegal units to be made legal by reducing the red tape and costs associated with minor variances. As seen by the crumbling landlord and tenant board, the province is certainly not stepping up to advocate for either tenants or landlords. The current state of the rental housing market is an opportunity for the city of Kingston to assume a leadership role and provide education related to residential rental properties. When you go on the city's website now, the only information for tenants or landlords is under property standards. The average person wouldn't even know to look there, when it wouldn't make more sense to provide a standalone section that contains resources and links related to the rights and responsibilities for both tenants and landlords. Our association strongly recommends that the city to continue engage with landlords and tenant groups to develop effective resources that are easily accessible. Landlords and tenants know our neighborhoods. We have all lived experience in the rental market. We are an invaluable resource for the city. It is time to create a less adversarial relationship between landlords and tenants, and in turn, ensure rental properties are safe. We do not believe that any of the options presented are necessary to achieve the primary objectives and that they will all negatively affect rental market affordability and availability. That said, if these three are the only options moving forward, we will support option one with a recommendation that the registry be developed as a low-cost, no-cost requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Foster.
Thank you.
Our next delegation, we will go on to Jordan Morelli, speaking to clause 1 of report number 22 from Administrative Policies Committee with respect to residential. Ms. Morelli, you have five minutes. I will tell you when you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stephen, and counselors, for the opportunity to present this evening. I do have a slide deck. I'm not sure how that works, or if you can see it. I can't see. If not, we can just go without it?
You need just a second to display it.
All right, no problem. And will I just ask for the screens to advance, or will I have some control over that?
You just ask them to advance, and they'll advance, Jordan.
Perfect, thank you all. All right, so I'm here to discuss the matter proposed in report 22 of the Administrative Policies Committee, which you'll be debating later this evening. I'd like to begin by recognizing the hard work of city staff, which has led to this point in the process. According to the staff report, AP 2403, "In terms of alignment with the council's strategic plan, the proposed program is meant to align with the goal of promoting an increase in purpose-built rental housing." And I can assure you that any residential rental licensing program you bring in will have the exact opposite effect. The effects of a residential rental registry will almost certainly also not aid in achieving this goal. Next slide, please. "We're all keenly aware that we are in the middle of a housing crisis, not only here in Kingston, but across the country. We know from CMHC reports and from the city's own staff report that the main issues are lack of supply and affordability. Indeed, landlords and tenants alike rank housing affordability as their top concern." Next slide, please. "Lack of repair is a concern for far fewer rental households. We must also recognize that the vast majority of landlords are good landlords and are working to provide a public good, one that upper levels of government have failed to provide. Tonight's debate will center on a residential rental registry. A registry will increase the cost of housing to some extent. A residential licensing program would increase the cost of housing considerably. We are all interested in ensuring that everyone has adequate housing that is affordable and safe." Next slide, please. "What is the way forward? We suggest that, consistent with the staff report, the city should, one, review and refresh the property standards bylaws; two, review and streamline the property standards complaints process; three, increase tenant and landlord education; and four, enhance enforcement on properties with repeated violations. Also, a registry to collect key information regarding rental properties, if council decides it needs one, should require a low-fee or no-fee approach. Our position is that there is no need for a rental registry and that licensing would be harmful." Next slide, please. "The Administrative Policies Committee adopted option one from the staff report with one amendment." Next slide, please. Slide six. "That amendment added that landlords be required to complete a property standards and safety That amendment added that landlords be required to complete a property standards and safety self-certification checklist and an emergency information package. I would suggest that A, requiring an emergency information package and a safety self-certification checklist is relatively low-cost and reasonable. But B, requiring property standards self-certification is likely to discourage registration and it will uh gain little without inspections to verify declarations for accuracy and inspections are costly and unnecessary. Some other general comments on option one include A, adopting a pilot approach before rolling out city-wide would be wise, and that B, charging a registration fee is likely to discourage registrations. Next slide, please. Furthermore, the registry, if implemented, must be at no cost, or it will be detrimental to housing affordability. Overall, there are several key details about the proposed registry that remain to be defined. These include what are the metrics by which the city will know if a program is a success? What will be the penalty for not registering, or better yet, the incentives to register? How will the city even know what percentage of compliance has been achieved? It is not at all clear what a property standards self-certification checklist would entail. What happens to properties that are non-conforming or non-compliant with zoning bylaws or the building code? But other, but that are otherwise perfectly safe and adequate. This might lead to a loss of rental housing as it is usually cost prohibitive and often technically infeasible to bring older rental units into compliance. All this is to say that implementation of a registry is not likely to be worth the resources it will take on the part of rental property owners and city staff to implement it. Next slide, please. I would suggest that the best way forward is to support and vote for committee recommendation option one as it currently stands, or better yet, to amend it to A, add a direction that implementation report provided by staff in Q-three of twenty-twenty-four include a no-fee option. B, remove the property standards self-certification checklist requirement. And C, direct staff to set out a commitment to avoid forcing rental uh uses, forcing out rental uses because of zoning or building code issues, unless they have serious negative implications on safety. Uh, if we go to the slide ten, please, the last slide, the two slides ahead. Uh, I just want to end there and I thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, any questions from members of council? Council Usterhoff.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. I just wanted clarity. Thanks for the, for the submission, Jordan, and well done. Um, I just don't understand why you would say remove the property standard self-certification checklist. I don't have my glasses, but uh that's really small. Um, I just, I think it's a reasonable ask, you know, where uh as a responsible um landlord, even myself, full disclosure, I have permission to speak here and I talked to Ryan as well. We have permission to speak from the integrity commissioner, so I'll make sure that's said about, you know, we have no declarations for, for this, he says. So, um, why, why wouldn't uh that be something uh, a normal kind of relationship uh uh with the tenant for a landlord to submit? What's your concern?
Mr. Morelli?
Yeah, through, through you, Deputy Mayor Stephen, and uh thank you for the question. Um, it, it, I guess part of the problem is it's absolutely unclear what, what constitutes a property standards declaration? What sort of things would be on it? Uh, but one of the concerns that, that we would have is that if, let's say you had an older property, you know, a hundred-year-old property uh that um wasn't compliant with current building still, building code standards. So maybe the ceilings are too low, doorways are too narrow, uh what have you. Uh, a- and so landlords, property owners might be reluctant to make those self-declarations, knowing that it would draw the attention of uh property standards enforcement people to come in. And then, you know, I, I know city staff says they're, they're happy to work with landlords, but really what that means is they're happy to uh, you know, put the landlords through a process of a zoning amendment uh process, which is, as I understand it, several thousand dollars uh in cost. Um, you, you know, all for things that really have no implication on the safety and the suitability of the property.
Yeah, thanks for that. I, I think that's probably uh stretching it a bit. Uh, you're, you're jumping. I think that that was a reasonable request for normal kind of information to uh a tenant of what they actually have. So I think that, though I think your concerns might be valid in a different sect, in a different um evolution of licensing, uh if it were to license, uh I think that that's probably um not. So anyways, I just want to say that that's probably not, yeah. So thank you for your submission. Sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay. Thank you, Councilor Tom. Um, Councilor Bone.
You, Deputy Mayor, through you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, question for the delegation, Mr. Morelli for the delegation. Uh, I'm just curious if you had a chance to look at all the options that were presented um to the administrative policy committee. Obviously, option one came forward. Um, was it concerning to you and uh and to others in the community that there was really no do-nothing approach that was suggested? Or simply take the existing rules that we have and, and apply them properly? So that we're going after the bad apples rather than kind of painting everybody with broad strokes and hoping to shake out the bad apples? Was, was that a concern uh in the community?
Mr. Morelli?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, through you, Deputy Mayor Stephen, and uh thank you, Councilor Bone, for the question. Uh, absolutely, that, that was a concern um that, that we had. I mean, uh, it, it really is problematic that we're, you know, that there's any suggestion that, that um you know, a significant proportion of landlords are, are the so-called bad landlords. There's just no evidence to support that. There's no doubt that there are some, you know, landlords who are, are operating unscrupulously and, and the city staff lately has been doing, I think, a pretty good job about going after those uh offenders, especially, you know, anybody with repeated violations. You know, we encourage, the, the rental property association encourages the city to go after those landlords. And, and we believe uh that, that the city already has more than sufficient uh tools in its tool belt to actually go ahead and uh and, and do the things that it, it's, you know, says that it wants to be able to get done. Uh, w- we think that there's enough tools, you know, through, through e- education, through proactive enforcement of, of the, the, the bylaws and property standards and so on. So, so yes, we, we were disappointed that there, there wasn't a status quo approach. That would be our preference, would be that they, you know, that the city council would actually vote against all of these options and just uh do what, what the report suggests, which is to just sort of uh, uh, you know, refresh the property standards bylaws, streamline the complaints process, increase education, and enhance enforcement on, on properties with repeated violations. So, um, so I think that, that's fair. And then, just if I can, really quickly, on, on the property standard self-declaration, because I think, you know, I'm unclear what's really meant there, but from Councilor Usterhoff's question um or, or statement at the end, it, I got the sense he was implying that maybe the tenant does that declaration. I, I really don't, don't know if that's the intent or, or not, um, but my, my response was if, if the intent is for the property owner to fill it out and not the tenants, so. But certainly, you know, maybe the, the city could survey tenants and that would be a, you know, again, a thing that the city has already in its toolbox that, that it could do to find out, you know, whether there's property standards violations or, or, you know, re, to, to enhance the, the complaints processes that already exist.
Thank you, Mr. Morelli. Just, just a follow-up question. Uh, I'm, I'm sure you're aware of the, the issues happening in Brampton, where, you know, they backtracked on this uh policy quite hard after the media cry and the concern of race brought, uh, raise cost to the end user, which nobody wants in an affordable housing crisis. So I guess my question to you, and uh, is, is anybody in your group aware of, of an example where these registrations, licenses, what have you? I mean, registration is just another licensing system through another name and, and fees or additional monetary penalties are the same. Uh, is anybody aware of an example where this has actually benefited um tenants and landlords and cities without raising costs? I couldn't find one, but I'm just curious your group.
No, not, not at all. Um, sorry, sorry, through, through you, Deputy Mayor. I, uh, we're not aware of anywhere where it's been done in any way that um doesn't raise costs. And, and you know, from the study that the city did in the report, it's very clear that that's a the main concern of tenants is that costs are going to go up and it's the nee, the main concern of, of landlords. Uh, in the slide deck that I submitted, if we advance to the very next slide, I included a little table that shows exactly, um, you know, what the situation is for Kingston, for example, for a, a typical property tax with a, a for a single detached home, as, as I understand it, about forty-five hundred dollars. The city uh this year has approved a tax increase of about three and a half percent. Um, and the trigger rate within the residential tenancy act is uh if there's a tax increase, which includes fees for things like licensing, uh that is more than one point five times the, the, the guideline increase amount, which this year is uh would make it a three point seven five percent increase, then uh those costs can be passed on directly and fully to the, to the tenants through what's called an above guideline increase. And so what that means in, in the case of, of a, a household in Kingston, a rental property in Kingston, if the registration fees or the licensing fees, if, if the city went with options two or three, were more than uh, uh, eleven dollars and twenty-five cents, that they would be, all those fees would be fully eligible to be passed on directly to the tenants. And, uh, you know, that, that might take some time to trickle through the system because as uh my colleague, Ms. Foster said, uh, the, the tribunal, the LTV is, is quite broken and there's tremendous delays. But those, those um increases absolutely would be passed forward. Uh, and within a year or two, you would see a dramatic increase in rents that ought not to be there, right? And, uh, we're in a housing crisis and affordability is the main cause of that crisis.
Thank you for that answer.
You too.
Thanks, Councilor Bone. Uh, Councilor Tozo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Morelli, for the presentation. Um, my question is, um, certainly in my district, and I know in, out near downtown, there have been a lot of um fires that have killed tenants in the past while. Uh, I know that your uh group is opposed to any form of registry or licensing, but do you not think? And keep in mind, we're talking about two districts that would be in the initial pilot phase, that this would provide some assurances both to good landlords and good tenants that would provide some degree of, you know, assurances that rental properties are up to code by having some degree of licensing and registration? Like, we license and we inspect restaurants, so I know I'm not getting a bad read, though, when I go to a restaurant. Don't you think that this is the least we can ask for rental properties where people live? Do you not think as a good landlord that certifying the entire area and regulating it provides assurances for good landlords and good tenants as well?
Mr. Morelli?
Thank you, uh, through you, Deputy Mayor, uh, and thank you for the question, Councilor Tozo. Um, with respect, I, I, I don't uh agree that, that, that that's the case. And I don't believe that comparing to restaurants is a, is a fair analogy, um, in part because uh uh, you know, restaurants can pass along costs of licensing and inspections and cleanliness and all those things uh to, to their customers, whereas uh rents are heavily regulated by, by the government. Uh, in fact, most landlords, most small landlords that are targeted by, by this proposal, especially if um licensing were, were considered through options two or three, uh, with, with the target being, you know, properties with one to four units. Um, that would really disproportionately target small landlords, um, who, who just can't afford to, to to bear the, the cost. Most of us are already underwater. Effectively, landlords are subsidizing tenants and rents already. Um, and, uh, you know, without the ability to pass those costs on, um, you, you know, that. So it's, it's a different model than, say, a restaurant or a convenience store or something else. But, but more to the point, um, councillors is, you, you know, first of all, uh, the, the, the tragic loss of life in those fires, you know, that's a horrible thing. And, uh, you, you know, the, the rental property association, which I'm a board member of, uh, fully supports the city's efforts to go after the, the owners of those properties for any property standards violations. Um, but I think it's really uh not at all accurate and, and it does a bit of a disservice to, to everybody to suggest that having a license, uh, licensing program would have prevented any of those things from happening. The reality is, is that, you know, tenants, if, if um, you know, and I'm not, I'm not about to blame tenants for, for what caused the fires. I, I just don't know what caused those fires. I don't know if there was working smoke alarms. I, I don't know, you, you know, enough details about what, what happened there. And I would hope that you, you council would um talk to the fire chief uh about those things. But at the end of the day, uh, you know, the, the tenants have the ability to report property standards violations. And the city has a quite a convenient-to-use website, uh, web form that, that the property standards violations can be uh reported in. Uh, as, as I recall from, from the website, uh, the city will respond within one week to set up an appointment. Uh, if the, if the tenant can demonstrate that they've reached out to the landlord and the landlord failed to take the necessary corrective steps, the city can, can do inspections. They can actually get warrants if the, if the tenants refuse to invite them in, which, you know, why wouldn't the tenant invite you in if, if they're the ones reporting a, a safety violation? Uh, so, so the reality is, is the city already has more than ample tools to uh protect tenants, to protect uh all of the citizens of Kingston, to make sure that, that they're living in, in safe and adequate uh shelter. Um, and what, what really needs to happen is we need to educate people of their rights to, so that they know that they, they can simply just fill out a web form or come to city hall and, and make a complaint at the property standards office.
Councilor Tozo, you have another question?
I'm okay.
Okay. Councilor Glenn, please.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. Um, Mr. Morelli, you, you speak to the complaints process. And, you know, I know that you were present at the admin policy um meeting. So what do you say to the, you know, delegations that came and discussed the fact that there are people that are in Councilor Tozo's district and in my district that have difficulty lodging those complaints because they don't have access to that technology? Or the complaints process takes so long that they're long gone before any rectification of matters can be undertaken? A large portion of why this was brought was because of those concerns that this was simply complaint-driven. So can you speak to how you think that's going to be remedied if we don't do something along this line?
Mr. Morelli?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you, and uh thank you, Councilor Glenn, for that question. I think it's a really important question to, to ask. At the end of the day, you know, it, let's take the nuisance party bylaw uh as an example. You know, the city and the university, but, but the city importantly makes an effort at certain times of the year to go out and proactively send out uh bylaw officers and property standards officers to the, the Queens district, the University District area, knock on doors and make sure that the, the residents there, the tenants, uh, know their rights and their responsibilities. Um, and, you know, what's, what, what, what the city's considering right now is introducing a, a registration, a registry system. Uh, at the administrative policies committee, there was a licensing program on the table. Both of the, those things uh will incur costs for the city. For example, if the city even just has a registry, there's going to be several thousands of uh filings that come in. Somebody's going to have to be hired to review all of those things and uh validate them, make sure they're accurate, update them from year to year and, and so on. And, and I'm suggesting to you that, that the city staff would be much better deployed within the framework that already exists, uh, even if it meant we needed to hire a few more um property standards enforcement officers or bylaw enforcement officers. I think it would be money well spent to, to ensure that the, the citizens of Kingston are safe in their homes and that they know their rights and their responsibilities. Um, you know, that, and, and, you know, I was, like you said, I was at the administrative policies committee meeting the, the other, uh, last week, I think it was. And, you know, there was tenant advocates there and it's great that those people are out there helping tenants who, who need help. But what is clear to, to me, and I, I imagine is clear to you, although I don't want to speak for, for you, Councilor Glenn, but you, you know, there are, there are folks among us in our community who need help. They need support, uh, even to just do s- basic things like sweep the floor or, or clean the kitchen, you know, put away dishes and, and, and do some, some basic things. And including, you know, uh, gaining access to websites to fill out a complaint web form. So it's, it's great that there's advocates out there. It would be, it would be great if upper levels of government would do their, their proper role and fund social services properly. Unfortunately, the, the weight of that is once again falling on the municipality. Uh, and, and, you know, city of Kingston has been doing a fabulous job over the years, uh, such as it's able with the budgets that it has to, to support the members of its, of our community that are, that need it the most. Um, but I think that uh putting resources into a licensing program uh is misguided when putting um property standards enforcement officers and bylaw officers on the street would be much more helpful in terms of supporting those people who need it most and making sure that their concerns are addressed and heard.
Thank you. Councilor Glenn, do you have another question?
Yes, I have another question because we're talking about costs. So my question is, how do you think this co, the cost of licensing really differs from the cost of additional staff to do education, blitzes? Um, the reality is either way, there's going to be an increased cost and we know that. It's about managing it in a, a reasonable way. So I'd like you to explain to me how you think the cost is going to be different because either it will go onto the city's books and come forward in property tax or we will have some form of licensing and part of that might be borne by landlords. So explain what you think the difference is and how, you know, your idea is going to be better somehow. Mr. Morelli?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and uh through you. Thank you for the question, Councilor Glenn. Uh, I, I think you sort of answered the question yourself. I, I mean, small landlords, those targeted by the licensing pilot program with one to four units are already, for the most part, underwater with the, the hikes in uh interest rates. Um, you know, I, I, I was speaking with a, another person just in the hallway earlier today who had a rental property and they told me they were losing nine hundred dollars a month on that, on that rental property. Um, you know, it's, that's, it's what it is. That's the system we're in. Landlords are struggling, but landlords are, are providing a public good. So I think it's really wrong to offload all of the costs onto the, the rental property owners who are providing that public good. We should actually be grateful to the landlords who are providing that service to, to our community uh quite often at, at a, a loss uh in, on a cash flow basis. Um, so, you, you know, I think that spreading the cost burden out over all of the taxpayers uh through perhaps property taxes um is the, the fairest way to do that. And, and through property taxes, of course, that means the tenants are also paying for a share of that. Because, you know, a, a portion of rent goes towards property taxes. As to the part of the question regarding the comparison between, you know, adding staff to do blitzes and the cost of licensing, um, there's two parts to the cost of licensing. The first is the cost directly imposed on the rental property owners to do all these various inspections that licensing no, no doubt would require, right? If you want to have a, an HVAC inspection, an ESA inspection, um, you, whatever you, you name the inspection, you're looking at, you know, fifty dollars to, to fifteen hundred dollars per inspection, if you need a professional engineer or somebody uh to come out, depending on what it is. So, so those are all costs that are, are going to have to be borne by the landlords as individuals and eventually passed on to the tenants, which is not good for, for anybody because the, the tenants can't afford those things either. Um, but a licensing program also requires staff because, as I said, somebody needs to be in the, in the city hall looking at all of these applications and reports and studies that come in from all of the various properties. And there'll be even more of them for a licensing program than there would be for a registry program. And, and that's going to require not just one staff, I, I suspect, three or four or five. Uh, my understanding is from the Queens University licensing, landlord licensing program that they ran for, for they ran for quite a number of years, that they had something like five full-time office staff running that program. I can't imagine the citywide could do it with fewer than that. So, you know, even if we only added five property standards officers to the City of Kingston staff, heck, if we only added one, whose job it was was to regularly go out every day and spend, you know, their seven and a half hours a day knocking on doors in a different district each day, I think that would go a long way. Because, you know, once you talk to one person on a block, they're gonna talk to their neighbors. And, you know, so even if not everybody's home, you know, you can leave brochures, you know, when the city staff go out and talk to the students in the University District around homecoming time, why not give them also a brochure that talks about their rights and responsibilities and how to report property standards violations? At the same time, you're telling them about, you know, their nuisance party responsibilities, right? So there's a lot that the city could do with the existing staff and with the things that it's doing already. But even with just a modest increase in property standards offices, the city could do so much more and so much more than licensing or a registry would do for the city and for the most vulnerable people in our city. So I would encourage you to do those things instead. It would be much more effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Morelli. We have five more delegations to go. So we are moving on to Ashley Purna, who will appear before council to speak to clause two with report number 20, which will be received from the CIO with respect to Limestone City Cooperative Housing Incorporated, City-Owned Property Commitment. Hi, Ashley, you have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Great, thank you so much. My name's Ashley. Thank you again for rearranging me tonight. I'm a paralegal candidate, so it's a stressful day. I'm also the executive director and one of the originators of Limestone City Cooperative Housing, or LCCH, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about us. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So we slide to, please, thank you. At LCCH, we firmly believe that everyone deserves a home and that housing shouldn't be a for-profit industry. We are all well aware of the housing crisis facing our city, and LCCH will offer a solution that traditional rental situations simply can't. A member-led organization where people can not only live, but thrive. We plan to blend housing and nature with onsite vertical farming, agricultural opportunities, and an abundance of green space to benefit both our members and the community. We hope to offer perks like accessible walkways, community gardens, and gathering spaces. Next slide. In promoting this project, I've noticed that there's some misconception about what a housing cooperatives are and what they and how they run. So I'd like to take a brief moment to clear some of that up. Can I get slide four on, please? Thank you. By law, all housing cooperatives must be not-for-profit. This means that housing cooperatives can never earn a profit, giving us drastically different goals than traditional rental arrangements. As a result of the units are often available at or near average market price, making it truly attainable for the average family, working professional, or newly retired senior. On top of that, housing charges can never exceed what it takes to safely maintain the building and pay off our debts and other obligations. A key component of housing co-ops is that they're run by members, and that gives those who live in a co-op so much more control over their living space than renters have. Next slide, please. So just a quick note on some terms. I'm just gonna keep going because I only have five minutes. Slide five is what we're on now, please. Just a quick note on some terms. Housing co-ops don't have tenants. We have members. And members have more input, more control, and more power than tenants. Instead of rent, members can pay housing charges, which, as we discussed, can never exceed what it costs to run the co-op. Can I get slide six on, please? So just a little bit more on those three prongs we discussed earlier. One of those key aspects of housing co-ops is that they're based on that not-for-profit model. Any earnings that we gain on top of what it costs to safely run the building have to go back into the building, and that reduces housing charges for all members. This model also means that our goals are different than those of a regular rental corporation. Our focus is on improving the quality of lives of our members, not lining the pockets of a landlord. Can I get the next slide, please?
And Ashley, sorry to see you're where the internet is having some lag issues right now. So if we need to add another 30 seconds, then we will, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So another key aspect is that our homes are attainable and they're not going to be priced far outside the average person's budget. Next slide. We've already mentioned a few times that housing charges can't exceed what it costs to run the building and pay down debt. And that's a huge part of what makes us attainable. Housing charges can never be arbitrarily increased without justification for that, unlike a rental situation. And as long as members follow the rules, they can live there as long as they want. This gives a sense of stability and permanence. Can I get the next slide? Another distinguishing factor is that the entire corporation is run by members. Next slide. Member-led governance has a ton of benefits. Members are able to vote on and run for the Board of Directors and have input in bylaws and other policies. Members also get to review financial statements and can voice objections if they don't think the co-op is being run properly. Members are expected to volunteer four hours per month, which goes a long way to developing that sense of community and keeping costs lower. Next slide. So now that we know how wonderful co-ops are, let's talk about the unique advantages of LCCH. Next slide. In no particular order, LCCH hopes to offer home for around 300 families. We're specifically looking to appeal to families, working professionals, and those looking to downsize. We really want to fill our building with community-minded individuals who want more control over their living situation. We have retained some skilled architects who are as passionate about this project as we are and who are willing to work and work hard at developing a space that can be elegant, attractive, and functional. Another thing that will set us apart from other co-ops is that we plan on integrating vertical farming and other agricultural opportunities into our land. This will provide our members with the ability to engage in hobbies and grow their own food.
Okay.
Next slide.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Are there any questions for members of council? councillor McLaren?
Ms Purna, could you tell us what you were gonna say before we were running out of time?
Yes, thank you. I was going to get to the aspect of housing security, which is a huge advantage of living in our co-op. Our members are protected against unreasonable increases, and we don't need to worry about rent evictions or evicting for family members. I just wanted to cover one last quick thing. The benefits that we want to offer to the community. We plan on giving access to green space, a walkable pathway, and gathering spaces where community members meet. We also plan on having community gardens, giving members of the co-op and residents of the area the ability to more fully enjoy the space that has sat vacant for years. And any access to fresh produce grown by the co-op but not used by our members will be donated to the community.
Thank you. Thank you. councillor McLaren, you have another question?
Yes, could you expand on where the money's gonna be coming from?
Yes. Yes, thank you. We have retained very skilled grant writers who are just itching to get a start on these grant applications, but who need to have a more solid idea of the specific land before we can really start drafting. A brief investigation into available funding revealed that were this land to be set aside for us, potential funding sources would include the Cooperative Housing Federation of Canada, the National Co-Investment Fund, the Canadian Cooperative Investment Fund, the Green Municipal Fund, and quite a few others. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Glen?
Thank you for the presentation, Ashley. Could you just sort of speak a little bit more to what some of those community benefits are going to be? I know you touched on a couple.
Yeah, so we're, at the moment, we've had a couple, one town hall where we got some input from the community on what they were looking for. And some of those ideas included a nice walkable pathway so we can traverse from one end of the land to the other. Community gardens where community members and co-op members can work at growing their own food, growing flowers, any kind of produce they wish to grow. We're also hoping to, like I said, have those community spaces available for people who want to gather, who want to meet. You know, if they want to have a Zoom meeting or a Zumba lesson, they would have that space where they could get together and do those things.
Okay, thank you. And one other quick question through you, deputy mayor. What does this project sort of mean to you and to the community at large?
This project means a lot to me. I've spent my whole life, my last year of my life, working on this, about 250 hours. I left an abusive marriage quite a few years ago, and what I was longing for was to have a sense of community to go to. So a building exactly like this is something that I think will bring so much benefit to community members. It gives a place where you can put work into where you're living. You have more control over where you're living than a rental situation, and you have a community of people with the same goal as you do.
Any other questions for members of council? councillor Ridge?
Thank you, madam Sharon, through you. Thank you, Ms Purna, for your presentation. I just want to go back to the financing piece a little bit because according to the report, the cost is approximately, or is estimated to be $170 to $180 million at this point. And so I'm just curious, with regards to your grant strategy, have you, do you have a rough estimate for what grants, the amount of grants that you will be applying to initially?
Yes, thank you for the question. Unfortunately, I don't have a very solid answer for you right now because without land set aside for us, our architects can't even tell us how many units we can have at maximum, the size of those units. We won't know how many RGI units we're able to offer. We really need to have some space set aside for our architects to form these reports. We would then have something that we would bring back to council within the year and give you guys a solid idea, hopefully give you all those answers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms Purna.
Thank you.
All right. Our next delegation is, we have Julian Mallet Hill. Oh, sorry, did I mess up? Julian Mallet Hill from Queen's University Alma Major Society, speaking to clause one with report number 22 from Administrative Policies Committee with respect to residential rental licensing. Hi, Julian.
Hi.
I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
All right, thank you, deputy mayor Stevens. Good evening, members of council, staff, and the public. My name is Julian Mallet Hill, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the AMS and the 20,000-plus undergraduate students we represent. Although our delegation is our own, it's important to note that on the issue I will be speaking to today, we are presenting a united front with the Society for Graduate and Professional Students of Queen's University as this issue affects all students. Next slide, please. On the evening of January the 24th, the Special Administrative Policies Committee voted on three options for a pilot program for residential rental licensing as presented by licensing enforcement. Next slide, please. The option passed was this one, option one. Return to you as report 22 of this council meeting, city council meeting today. Although this proposal for a pilot program is better than nothing for tenants in the city, it does not go anywhere near far enough to offer tenants the proactive protection they desperately need. Importantly, it doesn't even contain any form of rental licensing, unlike options two or three that were considered. Next slide. And either of which, and either of which we deeply wish had been passed instead. Tenants of all walks of life in Kingston are in a dire situation. According to 2023 CMHC report, the rental unit vacancy rate in Kingston was just 0.7%, nearly the lowest in the province. When the supply side of the market is this tight, the balance of power is shifted in the favor of landlords tremendously, since renters can hardly find a better property near their location if they wanted to. Thus, landlords really have no financial incentive to upkeep their properties. As a result, amoral landlords who choose profit over humanity can benefit immensely, even more than they often do in a more reasonable market. Regardless of what current market conditions are, the fact of the matter is that the quality of much of the rental housing in Kingston is in a dire state, a fact that students are all too familiar with. Hearing what students have to say and seeing the state of many student rental properties is enough to turn your stomach. The bar is immensely low. I would consider my property to be of high quality for a student rental, despite the unfinished siding on my house allowing rats to get in from time to time, and the bathroom being entirely unfinished with no baseboards and exposed pipes. Seen a lot worse, since students have told us much worse from our surveys and community outreach. Two very common talking points presented by many of the seven landlord delegations that presented the committee meeting on the 24th were, one, a licensing program would punish good landlords unfairly due to the fees they would be compelled to pay to be licensed, and two, a licensing program would force landlords to take their properties off the market, reducing the already low rental stock in the city. I would like to respond to these in case any members of the council feel these to be true. To the first, that good landlords would be punished, yes, it is true, that good landlords would have to pay these fees as well. But I would posit that this is not a punishment, instead a necessary collective burden similar to paying the police budget. Most people are not currently being victimized by crimes, yet we all agree it is necessary to maintain a police force from our collective tax dollars to protect those who are most at risk and currently suffering. Rental licensing is the same paradigm. The physical and mental damage one can suffer due to poor quality housing cannot be understated. To the second, that rental stock would be reduced, I will defer to what I heard the director of licensing enforcement say when he was asked by a member at the committee meeting whether he could confirm any statistical loss of rental stock in their study of other jurisdictions that implemented rental licensing. His response was that they saw effectively no statistical reduction in rental stock. This leads me to my final point in support of a real rental licensing pilot program. This is not a radical proposal. Next slide, please. According to the report made by licensing enforcement, these seven cities are all the municipalities in Ontario that currently have a full or pilot rental licensing program. I've not included many municipalities' programs that intend to protect tenants that aren't a comparable form of licensing though, such as Toronto's RentSafe TO. I would like you to notice how most of them are towns with a very large student population as well. I don't think that's a coincidence. I would also like to say that this entire conversation is merely surrounding a pilot program, which would be reevaluated sometime in the future before full implementation. We at the AMS firmly believe that it is deeply important for this program to at least be explored and that a proper pilot program that implements rental licensing is desperately needed by the tenants of Kingston. Next slide, please. For these reasons, we ask you today to use your power to disapprove the option presented by the committee, option one, and recommit to implementing a real pilot licensing program, only a pilot program, keep in mind, by approving something like option two or three that the committee considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julian. Are there any questions, members of council? councillor Glen?
Thank you very much for your presentation, Julian. So I have two questions for you. The first one, you know, could you sort of describe some of the living conditions experienced by students and the barriers that they're facing in getting those conditions remedied?
Yeah, absolutely. Through you, deputy mayor Stevens. Yeah, so students are facing constant issues, and this has been the case for, as far as I can tell, probably 150 years, probably longer for the whole duration of Queen's existence. Student livings is kind of notorious for being of poor quality, but I think it is getting worse, as I mentioned, due to market pressures. And the most common ones are, of course, ones that are frankly some of the most dangerous to your health, like mold and pests and no doorknobs and no, like, just, it's not even the more nitty-gritty, non-conforming elements. It's frankly, the most common we see are the ones that are the most offensive. And in a recent survey we did, about 56 responses, anonymous, of students of many different years from Queen's University, we asked them, are they currently satisfied with the physical quality of rental property? 30% said no, and 32% said kind of. And their standards are, you know, based on the current market. So it's not very good, to be honest.
councillor Glen? Yeah, so Julian, my next question, you know, the city has been making efforts to retain students as they graduate to fill in our workforce gaps. We know how critical that is. You've done a lot of surveys out to students. So how do the students you represent feel about staying in Kingston as they start their careers?
It's not looking good for a lot of the reasons like I've mentioned. It's two students, in some cases, like housing. It feels like the city has not done enough to protect students from the harms they face. And it doesn't leave a great impression, to be frank. Most of the time, the city only see, students only see the city when they're getting door knocked to tell them about the nuisance party bylaw, or they're receiving a nuisance party bylaw ticket. So I think a rental licensing program would go really far in not just protecting students in the outright, they deserve that, but also in providing positive narratives about the city protecting students and encouraging them to think fondly about Kingston and seriously consider staying here in their postgraduate life.
Thank you. councillor McLaren?
Thank you. You mentioned how bad the housing is, and it sounds like it might be getting worse. But on the other side of that, could you speak about how rental costs are affecting you? Are they going up or down? Are they matching that? Or are they going in opposite directions? Are they going up or down, or are they matching that, or are they going in opposite directions?
Yeah, absolutely. So rental, it's an overarching affordability crisis across all of Canada, especially Ontario, frankly, as aside from Vancouver area, B.C. And it's, it's, it's very, very bad. I'd say that the exact super right now is, super contemporaneously, rental prices are slightly stagnated, but it, I'd say average asking prices that I've seen for even just one bedroom in a five or six plus bedroom house is around nine hundred dollars in like the student area, student area district, which is, when I was looking, only four years ago, again anecdotal information, roughly six hundred was the average. So it's gone up tremendously, and I, we understand that rental cost, like the rental cost may increase slightly with rental licensing fees, but considering the scope and level of the fees that were being considered and the fact that, you know, many of these student living, these student units end up like their total, like rent they're taking in over the year is so high. I think comparatively, it will, it's not going to be that large of an increase. And if it is, if it is an increase, I think it's necessary. We can't compromise a safety and health or, you know, just a couple percent of rent.
Thank you.
Council Hassan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In the committee meeting, I heard this as well, and you mentioned as today as well, when the apartment condition or the property condition, like the door, no doorknobs, molding in the house, rats in the house, when you guys sign the lease, is you are able to check everything, what you are renting, and if that's up to living standard? Or is getting trashed after a couple months, or, or, you know, during the season? So if you see the rats up there, is that really landlords fault to bring the rats over there and deliver it with them? Or you guys, I mean, the resident live a lot like that, then they create the rats and, you know, molding and stuff like that?
Julian?
Um, yeah, through, through your deputy mayor. I would like to answer this question kind of two levels. The first being that oftentimes many of the quality issues in a house are not immediately apparent upon showing of the house or intentionally masked. Specifically in the case of rats and pests, oftentimes they're not out in the daytime. So you may never see them or may never know until you move in, or they may develop while you are there, and then the landlord refuses to help you deal with them. Or they may develop due to another unforeseen issue. And I mean, also, like you said, if they develop before, between showing to when you get there, that's also something you can't particularly control. It could happen really at any point. It's not, usually not particularly visible. And then, secondly, I'd say that oftentimes, even if they do see problems, it's not always like they have an option. Like I said, the rental vacancy rate is so incredibly low right now, point seven percent rental vacancy rate in Kingston, according to the last CMHC report. That is cataclysmically low. There are almost no options if you need to live within a specific distance from Queen's University in order to attend classes.
Council Hassan, do you have another question? Council Bone?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I just want to follow up on Council Hassan's question there. In regards to not being able to see the issues ahead of time, is it possible that maybe, you know, following the same line of reasoning that Council Hassan mentioned, that some of these issues quite simply just didn't exist ahead of time, and they're perpetuated by the fact that there is, you know, issues going on, like garbage not being put out properly, properties not being maintained by the tenants themselves that are perpetuating some of these issues like rats and cockroaches and everything. I mean, what data do you actually have that puts it on the landlords? It's, it's, it's certain tenants oftentimes don't necessarily follow the rules, put garbage out or do anything that is required of them or part of their lease agreement, and then turn around and say, okay, well, it's, I now have cockroaches. But the landlord has history of many other tenants that never had that problem. So is it quite possible that this may not just be a landlord only issue, and that there are certainly some tenants that do not follow the rules as well, or meet their obligations, which perpetuates the issue, but this is being pegged as only a landlord only issue?
Julian?
Through you Deputy Mayor. Yeah, absolutely. There are definitely quality issues caused by, caused by tenants, but I don't think that that's within the scope of the city to address, and nor is it, is I, I think that rental licensing would actually help, help find out those problems, you know? So for example, if you get an inspection one year and you see the housing is in good quality, and you come back the next year after the tenants have destroyed it, I think it's within, it's suffice to say that the bylaw licensing enforcement could understand that that's not regular wear and tear, and that that's an issue between the landlord and tenant to be taken through civil courts or the landlord-tenant board. So I don't think that that's necessarily a rebuttal to the program. And I don't think that, again, quality issues are only caused by landlord disrepair, but that there are certainly a lot of issues caused by landlord disrepair, landlord neglect and disrepair. So I think that this, this program would, is necessary and would address those.
Okay, a follow-up, thank you, a follow-up question. Earlier it was mentioned that, you know, there, there's, there could be the potential for some properties that maybe have grandfathering issues because they, they simply may not meet the standards for self-certification or anything like that, which could create barriers to the landlord's actually continuing to rent them, which could in turn reduce the number of properties available. Beyond that, the licensing and registration issue that we have here, you yourself just mentioned that it would likely be on the landlord and tenant board to deal with a lot of these issues. So it's quite possible that what we're doing now is decreasing costs. Do you not necessarily see this as potentially a duplication of effort of an existing board that's already overwhelmed and the municipality taking on it? Really the purview of what's essentially already a board that simply lacks the resources. So is this something the municipality should be taking on, or should we be petitioning the departments to properly fund and support the landlord and tenant board to deal with these issues at the appropriate level, rather than us trying to duplicate that effort at a lower level, burdening the affordable housing prices and also our local taxpayers?
I would, I would, sorry, through you Deputy Mayor, I'm terribly sorry. Yeah, I would say that I agree with you, the landlord-tenant board needs to improve, and I've, for my external advocacy as part of my position, done a lot of research into the extent to which it has kind of been destroyed, and the Ombudsman Report, Ombudsman Report from 2023. I think that the city council should do both. I am of that opinion. I believe that they should continue to lobby the provincial government, or begin to lobby the provincial government for the improvement of the landlord-tenant board to get into a functional state. You shouldn't, again, you shouldn't have to be dealing with this, but I think that realistically, you have to do it on multiple fronts. And I think that the, the city should be, should, should do what it can in the absence of, you know, of, of a functioning province, provincial systems, but also that proactive measures like licensing can really only function on a city level, in my opinion.
Thanks for your answer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, thank you, Julian. We are moving on now to our next delegate. We have Mark Brule, Vice President, Acquisitions and Corporate Development with Homestead Land Holding. He's speaking to clause one of report number twenty-two from the Admin Policies Committee with respect to residential rental licensing. Hi, Mark. You have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Awesome, thank you. Honorable members and members of the public, my name is Mark Brule, and I work with Homestead Land Holdings Limited as Vice President of Acquisitions and Corporate Development. Homestead is an owner-operator that predominantly manages multifamily, high-rise properties across Ontario and Alberta. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight regarding the proposed pilot project for rental licensing here in Kingston. I know that this issue is not straightforward and is fraught with complexities, and I would like to thank the city for the level of consultation they have had, they have provided on this issue. First and foremost, I recognize that while the proposed pilot program may not directly affect the type of buildings owned and managed by Homestead, it is important for me to share our perspective. Across our entire portfolio, portfolio, we operate in many cities listed in the report that have implemented some form of rental registry or landlord licensing program. Therefore, we have gained valuable experience with such programs. From the outset, these programs are initiated with the best of intentions, which we can all agree is paramount. Enhance safety for residents and rental properties subject to the program. However, these programs often lead to unintended consequences that can worsen rental markets already struggling with historically low vacancy rates and rental availability, specifically at the more affordable end of the spectrum. The reason for this is twofold. Firstly, the fees associated with both registering and complying with these programs can be extensive. While the cost for each option has yet to be determined by city staff, the enrollment fee is just one element for consideration. If capital investment is required by a property owner to comply with the program in the form of extraordinary renovations, repairs or replacements, the cost could be considered under Ontario's above guideline increase program. If awarded, and depending on the amount of capital invested by the property owner, this could result in up to a nine percent rent increase for the tenant over a three-year period. This would also be in addition to the guideline rent increase established by the provincial government each year. For residents already struggling with affordability, this would be no small amount. Moreover, licensing programs primarily target absentee or delinquent property owners who often operate rental housing in the more affordable sector, making it more likely that the cost will disproportionately impact those who can least afford it. Secondly, the increased complexity and bureaucracy hurdles associated with such programs can discourage small-scale property owners from continuing to provide rental housing, particularly in the affordable segment. The reason for this is that properties with one to four units in a city like Kingston are often set up in traditional housing structures and can easily transition between rental status and owner occupied. In the case of a rental registry or landlord licensing, depending on how far-reaching and owner's the program might be, you could easily see owners choose to either downsize the number of units in a house to comply, example, turn a duplex back into a single-family home, or choose to simply sell the property, displacing the existing rental occupants. Again, given the property owners that this program is targeting, the more affordable end of the rental spectrum is likely the worst at risk of being affected, which, given Kingston's overall vacancy rate of zero percent, zero seven percent, would not be well timed. In conclusion, drawing from our experiences in other markets, we advise caution when we're caution regarding the implementation of any sort of rental licensing program here in Kingston. The unintended consequences would be significant, especially for rental housing in the city's more affordable segment. The city already possesses tools and authority through existing property standards bylaws in conjunction with the fire department to address delinquent property owners. The report does a great job of recommending how these existing tools could be better utilized, and I would respectfully encourage council to thoroughly look at that option as the best path forward on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from councillors? Oh, Council Bone?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through you. Thank you, Mr. Brule, for your presentation. I think it speaks volumes, you know, you being here and presenting this data, even though you don't technically have any skin in this game. I guess my first question would be a question I've asked other delegations. Are you aware of any example where licensing or registration has had a cost versus benefit ratio that's actually positive? In the, in essence, you know, the, the benefits that were gained far outweighed the costs. I was unable to find anything. All I was able to find was a burden that was essentially almost always passed on to the end user. And that seems to be what you said in your delegation, but I just wanted to say, do you know of anywhere where adding bureaucracy and revit has actually reduced the cost or made things more affordable?
I, I'm not aware, and as I noted, I mean, Homestead operates in a lot of the municipalities that have introduced a registry or licensing program. A lot of the time, it is in the sort of one to four, one to six type property owners, and if substantial capital investment is required into properties, savvy property owners do offload those costs onto the residents, unfortunately. And as we've noted in the past, some of these things are not life safety issues, it's just things that don't adhere to current building code, like, like ceiling heights, door, door widths, those types of things.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So I guess effectively, I also heard in your delegation that the city essentially already has existing tools. What in your estimation can the city do better with any existing tools without adding additional burdens or costs to either landlords and or end users? Using the existing tools, it would add any more officers help, like what, what are some examples in your experience that we could do using the tools we already have, rather than kind of adding more tools?
I, I piggyback off of a current response. I think tenant education is a huge component of this entire initiative. Some tenants just don't know what they don't know. So flyer drops, those types of things would be beneficial. Specifically at Homestead, we have a work order program. I know we have, you know, high-rise concrete buildings, but we have a work order program, program. So when a tenant comes into our building, we educate them, we tell them, hey, if you have a pest issue, if you have a heat issue, any sort of issues, fill out a work order, we'll deal with the, we'll deal with the problem. I mean, that's Homestead, I mean, that's our philosophy. But if tenants were properly educated when, when they're living in a rental property that's one to four units in Kingston, they would be able to, to follow property standards or call by law, have these issues addressed. So that's sort of our experience.
Thank you for that answer. So it sounds like we have some tools, we're just not properly utilizing. I would note that, my opinion.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions from councillors? Nope. Okay, thank you. We are moving on. Our next delegate is Tony Hu, Vice President, Community of Queen's University Society of Graduate and Professional Students, speaking in clause one of report number twenty-two from Admin Policies Committee with respect to residential rental licensing. Hi, Tony, you have five minutes. I will let you know when you have thirty seconds left.
Thank you. I'm just gonna wait for my slides to come up.
And just, you probably saw the other delegates, there's a bit of a lag with the internet, so we, we hear you and we're fine. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Hu, and I'm the Vice President, Community of the Society of Graduate and Professional Students. The student union representing nearly 5,000 students in graduate and professional programs at Queen's University. These are MD, JD, Education, Physical Therapy, Occupational Therapy, Nurse Practitioner, MBA, Masters and PhD Students. In other words, the membership of the Society of Graduate and Professional Students represents the future of the healthcare, legal, education, business, research and innovation workforce. Outside of my role on the student union, I'm one of the second-year medical students at Queen's University. Next slide. I speak tonight as part of a united student front with the AMS. Together, the SGPS and AMS represent nearly all students studying at Queen's University at Kingston. Student perspectives should be particularly important for city council as the pilot residential rental licensing project will operate in two districts only, Sidnum and Kingscourt Rideau, districts where there is a high proportion of student tenants. Students are asking for livable housing. What does livable housing mean? Next slide. On page ten and eleven of report number AP24003, presented to the Administrative Policies Committee on Residential Rental Licensing, figures one and three show the results for landlords and tenants respectively in a survey distributed to the Kingston community for consultation on a proposed residential rental licensing program. See how the renter-specific feedback on the bottom and the landlord-specific feedback on the top differs. Landlords express far fewer issues with their units, whereas renters express far more issues with those units. What explains the differences in feedback between these two groups? Most likely, tenants are reluctant to speak about the issues they have in their residential units, ostensibly for fear of losing their homes. As a result, landlords never hear about these issues. These data represent just the tip of the iceberg. The renters who have the most to gain from a residential rental licensing program, improving housing quality, are also the least likely to respond to a community survey because of the daily insults endured from living in substandard housing. Next slide. The student population is transient, unlike the more permanent population of Kingston landlords. This creates a sizable power differential between landlords who are established in the Kingston community and students who are newcomers to the Kingston community. Think about the students who come from outside of Ontario to study in Kingston. Think about the students who come from outside of Canada to study in Kingston. Think about the students who are living on their own for the first time ever. Students do not deserve to be exploited by bad landlords. No one does. A residential rental licensing program would resolve this problem. As the representative of graduate and professional students, I can tell you that option one, as amended and recommended by the committee, is an important next step, but does not go far enough. It preserves what already exists, which is the complaint-driven system that burdens tenants and makes them more precarious. I remember speaking to a classmate after the committee meeting that recommended option one. I explained to him what option one was. I was met by a blank stare, a long pause, and then he asked, "So what's the difference between option one and what we already have?" I hope that highlights my point. Considering the potential for vastly improved quality of life for renters, I would strongly encourage city council to support option two. I would strongly encourage city council to support option two, a pilot residential rental licensing project. Thank you. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any questions from members of council? Councillor Glenn.
Thank you, Tony, for your presentation and your comments. Um, I'm going to ask you similar questions to what I already asked of Julian. And so first, can you speak to the the barriers faced um in reporting and getting remediated the living conditions that are being experienced by the students?
Thank you, councillor, for the question. I think first, it's important to maybe provide councillors with an example of some of the living situations that myself and that my classmates and peers have experienced. I, for one, have lived in a home in Sidnum District that had rats, that had squirrels, and that had birds living in it. And it frankly felt like I was living inside a zoo. I've had uh peers tell me that they were told they need to wear like a respirator at night when they're going to bed because there is toxic levels of black mold in their homes. And I've had folks tell me about experiences where they move in and appliances aren't working. Well, there's a bylaw, a property standards bylaw that says, you know, your appliances should be working, but by the time that that issue actually was resolved, this person was no longer living there. They had completed their twelve month lease. So uh there is a bunch of issues and uh there are definitely uh bad apples and bad landlords that exist. And I think it's important to remember that a universal policy like this one, as much as I understand the desire to go after those specific bad actors, this sort of universal policy actually disproportionately affects those bad actor landlords and disproportionately benefits those tenants who are living in the worst living situations. While those good landlords are minimally affected and those tenants who are in great housing situations are also minimally affected.
Councillor Glenn?
Thank you, Tony. And so my second question, um, so as I mentioned previously, the City of Kingston has been making efforts to retain students as they graduate to fill our workforce gaps. Um, so how do the students that you represent feel about uh staying in in Kingston? Tony?
Thanks for the question. As I mentioned from the outset, I'm one of the medical students at Queen's University, and I'm also a new transplant to Kingston, originally from Toronto. Coming to Kingston, I was quite shocked to hear from so many community members that they were missing a family doctor. No one seems to be able to get a family doctor in the city, which is surprising considering there is a medical school inside Kingston, right? There's Queen's University School of Medicine, which I go to. And I think part of the challenge with attracting students is, I think, some of the sentiments that have been sort of expressed uh in this space today, where students are living in substandard housing, where students are being accused of being the cause of that substandard housing, of bringing rodents or bringing bugs into their homes, where students are being told they need to be hyper vigilant. I remember when I accepted my offer to Queen School of Medicine, I was warned, warned in advance, before I had even stepped foot in Kingston, that the landlords in Sidnum District are particularly bad, and you should be careful. So students are coming in with an expectation that they have to be hyper vigilant about their housing situation. And unfortunately, for students like myself, as I, as I mentioned, my living situation last year, which was definitely substandard, you just have to bear with twelve months of painful, painful housing, which is a health problem, which affects the way that you perform at school and uh affects your ability to uh think about Kingston as somewhere where you would want to live and work in the future.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. Councillor Ball?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. Um, you mentioned in your uh one of your answers there that uh a residential licensing program would disproportionately benefit. Um, you know, tenants who are living in in, you know, negative um situations. Um, what data do you have to actually back that up? Because I could make a claim that, you know, ultimately it would disproportionately raise the unaffordability of some of these places. But but, you know, the this, the data seems to simply be lacking. And unfortunately, a lot of what we're discussing is anecdotal bad experiences, which tend to rise to the surface, aren't necessarily reflective of the entire experience of most of the student body. So are we, in your opinion, talking about some of the extreme examples that students have had of bad landlords? Or are we simply saying that all landlords in Kingston are terrible and we need to basically just attack them all and and hit them with a hammer?
Thank you for the question. Um, I'd like to start my response to that by saying that as Vice President, Community, as someone who represents my membership, those five thousand graduate and professional programs, I was elected with a ninety percent mandate to advocate on behalf of students about issues related to housing. I think a lot of the conversation around higher costs is a bit of a red herring. And the reason why I say that is I don't think we can talk about a housing affordability crisis so much as we can talk about a housing crisis. Because I think affordability and quality of housing go hand in hand. We can't say to our most vulnerable uh tenants, my, our vote most vulnerable renters, that, you know, you just need to have a home no matter what, even though it actively poses a threat to your health and wellbeing. So uh that's my first point. My second point is in response to the data. So as I mentioned before, as I showed the figure that was provided um by city staff in the report I mentioned, uh, you, I, as I say, the people who stand to gain the most from a residential rental licensing project are also the least likely to fill out a community survey. And the reason is, is that every single day they have to deal with their substandard housing condition. If you had to deal with a squirrel who was running around ramping in your house, if you had to deal with trying to fight a bird every time you left your room to go use the bathroom, if you had to deal with vermin in the basement where the washer and dryer were, you might not have the capacity to provide the data that you're looking for with respect to is your housing adequate? Because I think as the example shows, it's not, and those people aren't actually being adequately reflected in our current measurement tools.
So are you essentially saying that the data that we collected is is basically garbage information? If the very people that we're trying to collect data from are very unlikely to actually give us that data, it would stand to reason that the data collected during the survey really doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot at the end of the day because we didn't collect it from the people we need to hear from most. So should we be going back and trying to access those very people that we don't seem to have collected data from to truly understand what the issues are, where the concerns are, and focus in on those terrible landlords that that none of us seem to agree with? And and focus on them rather than, it's kind of like stopping every person who drives on the four oh one and checking to see if they were speeding every single car rather than just going for the few people who are speeding. It like, I'm just, I'm at a loss of how this registry fixes the things with the bad examples that you provided. So if you could clarify how a registry fixes that by going after everybody rather than focusing on the few bad apples that are causing these terrible living situations, I think you'd gain a lot more support. But so far, I've not seen, I think many people have concerns that blanketing everybody with a statement doesn't necessarily fix the problem.
Tony?
Thanks for the question. I think there's a couple of different pieces in there, so I'll try to dissect them out. Uh, with first, the point about the data being garbage and throwing it all out, I would say, no, that's not what I'm saying. The data isn't garbage and we don't need to throw it all out. Rather, what I'm trying to use is this iceberg analogy to say that the stuff that we can see right now, which already in what I showed you was that tenants feel that their residential units are not up to standard, whereas landlords to a much greater extent feel that their units are up to standard. So that discrepancy, which I'm pointed out to city councillors, represents just the tip of the iceberg. That's the ten percent perhaps, like, I'm just giving an arbitrary number, but like the ten percent that we can actually see based on what we've collected. But the reality is underneath the surface, there's ninety percent, there's so many more people who haven't been captured in that data, which would only show that there's a greater discrepancy between how tenants assess their rental units and how landlords assess their rental units. And I would say that objectively, you know, two people, a landlord and a renter going into the same unit should have the same assessment of the quality of the unit. The unit itself hasn't changed at all. It's just two people providing obsessive, an objective assessment of how fit they think that unit is. So that's the first point. Uh, to the point about um the highway analogy and the and the four oh one, I I don't think it's a, it's a fitting analogy. Um, and I think that to what I was saying, that this idea of, I I can appreciate how in policy circles we might want to really target those bad actor landlords. But the reality is that those bad actor landlords are still out there. They're on the loose. And the other part of, right, bad apples is that the, a few bad apples, you know, spoil the whole barrel. So that's why I think it's really important that we have this universal or this, you know, larger registry or better licensing program that's able to cast this wide net, make sure that those bad apples aren't being missed.
Thank you for that answer. I think you may possibly inferences to data that may or may not be there with the iceberg analysis, but you know.
Good job, councillor Ball. You've had your two questions. Sorry, with all due respect there. Thank you. Um, councillor Easterhoff?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm sure, Mayor. I just would echo that same last question with my colleague councillor Ball, and I really respect what you're doing for your work. And I I think we can recognize that we have universities, student housing, St Lawrence College, and I'm also a contractor, and I have seen it. I have seen it all. Okay, and 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 I think we really have an exhausted home residential area that is allowing this unbelievable. Well, the question is, how can you expect a licensing program, give me evidence that it's going to succeed, that we're gonna arm the umbrella of the entire city? Like, I would think we ought to channel, I could, I'll sit on the board, I'll find a way, but wouldn't, why wouldn't we just take on student housing right now, like Oshwa decided, and say, how can we help you? Because I don't want to see it continue either. But overall licensing and pilots, I I don't, I think we're wasting our time on that. And I would love to focus on that situation that you actually have and not make it a blanket coverage.
Tony, time.
Thanks for the question. So maybe I'll just repeat it to, just so we know that we're on the same page. But I think the question was, why would we want to do a pilot residential rental licensing program in Sidnum and Kingscourt Rido instead of specifically tackling student housing? And I think my response to that is, the reality is, a lot of the housing in those districts is student housing, where it's ha student, it's housing that students live in. And so I I actually think that we are accomplishing that same mission by piloting this project in these two districts. And I will also echo that because it's a pilot project, it actually gives the city the option to reassess. Right? We can't look into a crystal ball and say, this is the effect that this for sure will have. With many policies, there can be unexpected knock on effects. And uh because this is a pilot, again, one of the strengths is that city council is able to uh follow up and review and see how this is going, and if that's the direction that the city wants to continue, or if it's another direction that might be better pursued to resolve this crisis that you've so eloquently pointed out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. It's been alleged that we have no data that uh licensing program would uh improve the situation. How certain are you of your data that uh it's accurate and that uh even a slight improvement would not constitute an improvement for influence in the city?
Uh, I would say very confident that uh there is so much room for improvement. And as uh is evident by the fact that both myself and Julian together, representing almost all students that are studying at Queen's University in Kingston, um, are here, we're together under a joint front that students would really welcome uh any initiative that would improve housing quality in the city. Um, and uh, so thank you for the question.
So if I heard you correctly, it sounds like you believe that the data does demonstrate that there could be an improvement and that there is a need for this in contrary to what we heard earlier that there is not. Is that correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you very much, Tony. All right, we are on to our last delegate. We have Dylan Reed Davies, speaking in clause one of report number twenty-two from Administrative Policies Committee with respect to residential rental licensing. Hi, Dylan, you have five minutes.
All right, thank you so much. Um, I would ask, can we move to slide six? Just to avoid any sort of technical difficulties. Um, I was gonna say, hello, I'm Dylan Reed Davies. I'm with Just Recovery Kingston Affordable Housing Policy Working Group. I'm here to share some data from our recent survey that may be helpful for thinking about rental licensing. In summer twenty twenty-three, we surveyed four hundred and sixty-two Kingston tenants. And we found from this approximately seventy-five percent have asked the landlord for repairs in some method. Next slide. Tenants have faced some of the uh, oh, anyways, we'll see those later. Um, tenants face a variety of issues such as cracks in the holes and walls and ceilings, that's forty-eight percent of tenants. Thirty percent of tenants said they had mold in their units. Uh, around twenty percent of tenants said they had rats or mice in their units. All of these are property standards and public health concerns. However, we found that only twelve percent of tenants had contacted property standards to get help with repairs. Of that percent, majority said their issues were only partially resolved or not resolved at all. So we asked tenants who needed repairs but did not contact property standards why they did not contact them. They either said that they did not know about property standards, they feared landlord retaliation, or they did not believe property standards intervention would help. And so we have some quotes from tenants who wrote in to our survey to share what they experienced when they were thinking of property standards. Fear of getting help is one of the reasons why we're considering a proactive solution like licensing. In the tenants' own words, they said it would make their landlord angry if they contacted property standards. They felt lucky to just have a place to live, so they didn't want to cause problems, and they were scared of repercussions. They did not want to draw attention to themselves or be an issue to landlords unless they end up looking for somewhere else to live. Even tenants who did not know about property standards until this survey said that fear of landlords evicting them prevent them from seeking help. Next slide. And this fear of losing one home is real because it happens routinely. Over a quarter of Kingston tenants have been evicted or threatened with eviction. This is a massive figure and is disproportionate to other communities. This ought to deeply inform how the city approaches tenant issues like licensing because the fear of eviction is not simply fear, it's reality. Next slide. Reality is that tenants have been threatened for contacting property standards and have lost their housing because they've asked for repairs. Again, in the words of tenants who answered our survey, they said that when we contacted property standards, we were approached and we were verbally harassed about exercising our rights. Tenants are told that they're expendable and can be replaced if they cannot stand their substandard living conditions. One tenant said that their landlord said, if you don't like it, then move. There will be plenty of others that would rent your unit. A common refrain from tenants are told is, if you don't like your unit, move. However, this is not realistic for most, nor should tenants have to move because their landlord refuses to do needed repairs. Next slide. And so I guess the question tonight, we're answering it, so what can we do? The administrative policies meeting, councillors were on a split on whether to endorse option one or option two. Tonight, before you use the recommendation to adopt option one, however, there's still time to reconsider. On their face, the reforms posed are helpful. However, option one does not fix the problem at the heart of the issue, complaint driven system. The issue is not tweaking by law to make better use of resources, but rather the lack of authority and scope the by law has because of complaint driven. Steps like streamlining complaints and providing education make sense if we know the issue is the steps in the complaint process. But the problem is not the steps, it's the fact that we aren't getting complaints. This will not change until a proactive model is adopted. Next slide. The risk tenants face cannot be overstated. So for instance, Now Can operated in Kingston for a long time. They were a known offender with many property violations. This continued until twenty eighteen, when the roof of the building came off and the building was deemed unsafe. The impact on tenants was massive. Over eighty mostly low income tenants were displaced, and many were unable to return because they were run evicted. This was a preventable issue, but despite knowing the condition of Now Can's buildings, action could not be taken until disaster struck because of the complaint driven system. Next slide. Landlords, such as the one mentioned in this next article, are widely known in Kingston for their poor quality properties, but have faced no consequences until tenants' lives are lost or they are put in some risk where intervention is necessary. We cannot wait for housing conditions to deteriorate to the point that people are injured or killed. Next slide. So I encourage council to reconsider option two tonight. Our data supports an approach to rental licensing that does not rely on tenant complaints or by law intervention. Option one does not provide that, while option two does. It targets known offenders, which pose the greatest risk to our community but have been most difficult to hold cannibal. Most landlords would not have to pay more than administrative fees because option two places the majority of the cost on those in violation of the law. And right now, this costs are on tenants.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Baum.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. So thanks for your presentation. No, without doubt, there are, you know, bad landlords, um, we, you know, there's also terrible tenants, like, I mean, this is a problem we'd all like to see solved. My question is, with with option two, which everybody seems to keep going back to, there's still very little mechanism to actually force the bad apples. I mean, bad apples by essence don't follow rules. Good landlords are already following rules. So my question is, how how do we think that a registry and a licensing system that 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 is basically there, even if it's mandatory, is really going to force these bad apples that have resisted every single property standard step by law visit along the way into compliance? And it's going to benefit us, but at the same time, we're just going to burden all the good ones with that as well, which are going to cost them to and and cause them to increase costs. So it's, I'm still struggling, and and if you, if somebody can provide me a clear answer, how do we get to the bad ones without unduly burdening all the good ones? Because I would surmise that ninety-five percent of landlords are probably good. But we're still going after everybody. So do you have any ideas of how to focus in on the really truly bad ones? Because I think that's what everybody wants to get to here.
Um, through you, Madam Chair, um, I will respond to that question.
Thanks, apologies.
Yeah, no worries. Um, I'll say it's a great question. How do we not burden people who don't necessarily need to be burdened? Um, option two, I believe, was a a great um, compromise that staff produced between um, not taking action, that's an intervention, and doing an intervention for everybody. So this is a balanced intervention where you can actually look at the experience that, and I believe that Director Smith would probably be able to speak to this because it is um, his department. Look at the known offenders, right, which we have some information about, and do some more targeted work on that. Um, compliance is always an issue. However, I believe the city has described some mechanisms in which they would hope to gain compliance um, in their proposal, and that same trick of compliance would be an issue for option one as well. Um, I would say likely you could approach it by using the information we have about folks that are known offenders, um, coupled with um, information for tenants and landlords who are um, doing their job properly to ensure that they stay in compliance with the law. Um, and then progressively ensuring that standards are are kept up by communicating outreach and going to the community and ensuring that uh, landlords and tenants are informed that this licensing pilot is in this district, and we're going to be doing concerted effort to ensure that this district is participating in the pilot.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Just as a follow-up. The, there's limitations on what a municipality can actually enforce and do with any type of property standards by law. Um, their landlord intent or has has far more powers. So you mentioned, there is a question coming here. But you mentioned some of the very bad actors, which it was quite public and and media. Um, covered it exclusively, you know, multiple issues and everything. So I guess my my follow-up question would be, with all the things that we were able to as a city, um, fire, city, whatever, to throw at these bad actors, very little of it seemed to actually stick. Which means at the municipal level, we may not, with any licensing registry or by law, actually have the proper tools to deal with this. So what would we do different? Because we've tried and we still can't seem to get at them. So maybe we don't have the right tools at this level. Is that possible?
Dylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will say as uh, Director Smith mentioned in the Administrative Policies Committee, one of the largest barriers the city has identified to their current system is gaining entry. Um, it is a complaint-driven system, and so tenants have to be the one to initiate the complaint, which then gives the city permission to take action. Um, and so we see these like, and I pick these public examples because we can all draw upon them, but I'll say there are a number of examples in the community that are not public and that have not been published. Um, and will likely never be published because tenants are afraid that it will be connected to them. Um, and so we can say that apples that we know about are, um, as Tony mentioned, just a tippy iceberg. Um, so one of the main issues is gaining compliance, um, like gaining um, confirmation that uh, you can enter the unit as a municipality. Um, with a proactive system, this is something that the city would then be more entitled to do rather than having a complaint-driven system that would um, require a tenant to initiate um, that whole process to begin. Um, again, this is not my area of expertise. I am just a data collector and and researcher. Um, but I believe that this this issue um, was identified by city staff. Like the the entrance issue was identified by city staff is one of the main issues they were facing with um, addressing these large known problematic figures in the community. If you can't simply just go return to the unit or go to another unit that is Owen, far the same person, and then enter it without um, a complaint being initiated.
Thank you for that answer. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Counselor Glenn. Uh, through you, uh, Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you, Dylan, for the presentation and the data. I think that was uh, very helpful. Um, can you possibly speak to the issues around the complaints-driven process, particularly as it pertains to some of our most vulnerable? We have people who are tenants, who are on ODSP, Ontario Works, um, who lack the ability to access um, computers and phones and various other mediums to make that kind of a complaint, um, and may not be able to make it physically down to City Hall or other issues. Can you speak to that, please? Dylan?
Yeah. Um, thank you through you, Madam Chair. Um, this was a really important question to ask, and so I, and I'm glad you asked it because I have um, a couple of stories I'd like to share. Um, in some previous work, I did for the Social Planning Council of Kingston and District. Um, we interviewed tenants who have experienced um, some form of eviction displacement. And we found that many of the most vulnerable tenants were folks who were disabled, um, newcomers, um, and people who have other marginalized identities. Um, one of the main barriers that they found is um, balancing the survival of day-to-day life with actually um, and so with uh, maintaining a home and so keeping paying rent is also initially just a problem. Um, but we also see with getting help from other folks in the community, such as the authorities at the city of Kingston. A big issue for that is the threat of losing your home if you have a landlord who is providing things at perhaps a lower rate than they need to, um, with the exception that that lower rate is provided because the house is not up to standard. Um, we see this notably in our newcomer population. Um, I've been doing some ongoing work with um, some settlement workers about this. Um, we see many newcomers are not informed of their rights. And when they are violated, they're in a very precarious position because they do not have the finances to go anywhere else. Um, they don't have the language to ask for help. Um, if they have a settlement worker, that worker is generally with them temporarily, and many of them do not meet the standards to actually have a settlement worker for the, for like a, a longer duration of time than it would to actually settle into a place um, and identify the issues that need to be addressed. Um, and so I'd say it's a huge barrier. Um, when you're in a situation where you don't have control over where you live and there are no options that are viable to you of where you can go. Um, you'll want to do everything you can to make sure you can still stay in the one place you can stay. Um, we see that tenants um, vulnerable, the most vulnerable and just tenants at large are in a precarious position um, when they are identifying themselves to the city, a third party, that they need help and then bringing the authorities to speak to their landlord. For many landlords, this feels like an infringement on their business, um, an infringement on their privacy. Um, obviously, this isn't necessarily the case, and we don't want to make that happen. Um, but that's how it feels, and that's how it's taken, and it's taken out on the tenants who is dependent on a landlord to provide them with housing. Um, so I'd say for this pilot, it's it's important to consider that there are a few options. Um, as many others mentioned, our vacancy rate is zero point seven percent, which is um, the last time I believe it was that low was twenty sixteen, um, and I believe that was attributed to the influx of American students, um. And so we're we're returning to a place that was very bad for us. Um, we don't want this position to um, drag tenants down and um, lead to higher rates of of issues such as injury, death, loss of life, things like that.
Counselor Glenn?
It's fine. Thank you very much, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan. Okay, team, it is nine forty-four. Uh, we're going to press on and see how far we get. I think it's probably quite likely we will need to recess and come back tomorrow, given what we still have ahead, but let's keep going. All right, we have a petition, uh, petition varying approximately.
Go ahead.
Sorry, approximately seven hundred forty-six Nathan chairs with respect to reducing community-wide and to new Kingston corporate greenhouse gas emissions by at least fifty percent by twenty thirty was submitted to the first department on January twenty-third, twenty-four. Does any member of council have a position to present tonight? Seeing none. All right, we have uh, one motion of condolence. Moved by Counselor Baum, seconded by Counselor Risterhoff, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of Carl Holmberg, who passed away on the morning of January twenty-first at the age of eighty-one. Carl was a dedicated businessman and politician and served his community with kindness, compassion, and a sense of humor that incited joy and laughter wherever he went. Carl served as the last reef of Pittsburgh township before amalgamation in nineteen ninety-seven. He was instrumental in the creation of the Pittsburgh Community Benefit Fund and led the task force to keep CFP Kingston in Kingston. His passing is a great loss for our community. Our thoughts are with his family during this time. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to reports. We have report number nineteen from the CIO.
Moved by Counselor Osannick and seconded by Counselor Baum, that report nineteen from the Chief Administrative Officer Consent is received and adopted.
Thank you. Uh, do any members of council want an item separated for discussion? Nope, seeing none. Okay, uh, we will call a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. All right, we have, oh, let me delete that one.
That's okay.
All right. Uh, we have report number twenty from the CIO.
Excuse me, moved by Counselor Shea, seconded by Counselor Amos, that report twenty from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Thank you. All right, we have item one, notices of objection to proposed heritage designations. Are any questions from councillors?
Yeah.
Counselor Osterhoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Deputy Mayor, sorry for that. Um, I don't know what to ask, although I'm still confused. How far can objection go? And um, I I'm experienced in this because I've had it in the rural area as well. I just need clarity once more for council to uh, um, the existing concerns that we've all read about, and where where do you think they are going? Are we on it? What are we doing about it?
Director Gibbs.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I wonder if you could reiterate the question.
I guess the question I'm having is, when there are objections, how long does it take to resolve them? And is there, are there actual cases that cannot be resolved and would be freed up? Not continue?
Yeah, thank you, and and through you, Deputy Mayor. So in terms of timeline, there's a thirty-day window uh, wherein somebody can object after the notice of intent to designate is put forward. Uh, for the for the objections themselves, uh, the objections should focus on the heritage attributes of the property. So an objection to what's actually included in the bylaw. Of course, council has the the discretion to to decide one way or the other, but uh, in these cases that are uh, being discussed tonight, uh, only one of them actually spoke to uh, heritage attributes of the the property. Uh, that would be um, thirty-five Johnson Street. And I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Counselor Osterhoff?
Yeah, it's fine for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed and not carried. All right, item number two, uh, Limestone City Cooperative Housing Incorporated, senior on property commitment. Counselor Tozo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. Uh, my question is on the Limestone Cooperative Housing. Um, what happens on February seventh, twenty twenty-five if the they're unable to meet their um, the proposal in this uh, motion? Does the property go up for sale or wait to come back and get another review from uh, the co-op?
CIO hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So thank you for the question, uh, Counselor Tozo. We would report back to council on the progress that the Limestone Co-op has been able to make over the year. Um, and then it would be up to council to decide based on the progress that's been made, whether or not council wants to extend a timeframe, or if council at that point would prefer to proceed with uh, basically putting the property on on sale for another uh, potential purchaser.
Counselor Tozo?
Yeah, so, okay, so we'll have um, we'll have periodic updates about the progress of the of the uh, co-op throughout the year and the next year, correct?
CIO hurdle.
Thank you, and through you. So we can definitely provide you with an update at the same time as we report back on the other property, which is located on Gore Road. I think it would be appropriate uh, to provide council with an an update on both properties at the same time. So that's about mid-year um, within six months. So we'll get a sense of what's been advanced by then, and of course, we would report back before the end of the year to give you a sense of how much uh, progress has been made.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Okay, call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed and not carried. All right, item number three, we have an update. Kingston and area taxi licensing commission and accessible taxi program. Counselor Amos?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The concern I have, and I asked in in uh, session earlier, is the audited statements and the lack of audited statements over the last three years, and I and I know um, that the director explained what had taken place and and why the delay. It's awfully hard as a council to have fiscal oversight over any program that has no audited statements for the past three years. And I have, I have concerns about that. Um, are staff going to follow up in a timely manner to ensure that those audited statements are presented to them? And eventually to council?
CIO hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So uh, Counselor Amos, very good question. We actually have been in touch with the um, their accounting firm, so um, CFO Kennedy has been in touch to get an update on the progress for those outstanding um, years that uh, that are still missing. Uh, we will definitely bring those to council as soon as we receive them. We will not uh, wait. I do want to point out for for council that we have the ability through this agreement for accessible taxi to have something separate from their regular operation and focus on the administration specifically of those funds and and going to the accessible taxi. The city itself has very limited ability to have input into the Taxi Commission the way that it's currently structured as far as its overall operations.
Counselor Amos?
So in in theory, we can delay the transfer of um, budgetary money for the accessible taxis until the audited financial statements are presented to us.
CIO hurdle.
Thank you, and uh, through you. So um, they are currently collecting those revenues on our behalf because they're managing essentially the rideshare program. So the revenues that will be utilized to finance accessible taxis are going to be coming from the rideshare uh, fees and charges, which have been which have been managed, um, on behalf of, um, they've been managed by the Taxi Commission on behalf of the city for over, a little bit over a year now. So, they are getting the revenues directly. What we would like to do is to set up an agreement that basically allows, um, the Taxi Commission to track those separately and also redirect them to the program for accessible taxis.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. All right. We have report number twenty-one from the Kingston Heritage Properties Committee.
Moved by councillor Glenn and seconded by councillor Osterhaag, that report twenty-one from the Kingston Heritage Properties Committee be received and adopted.
Does anyone want to separate out any report for discussion? Nope. Okay, then we will vote on all of them together. All right, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? That carries, thank you.
You're the heritage guy, though.
Okay, everyone, it is now five to ten. Um, can we call a, maybe a ten-minute recess and try to come back and finish this tonight?
Yep.
Okay, we can do that?
Yep.
Okay, so everyone back and ready to go at ten oh five?
We have to make tools with the policies that are available, um, and find a balance between wanting more secondary units in the market and also protecting tenants. Uh, one thing I wanted to ask about, though, um, staff, before we sort of get going, is with option one, when we're talking about registry, what are some of the other benefits that this would add to the city, especially our planning department? Because I think this is a key feature we also need to look at, not just with how it helps tents, but how it helps nerd development. Can staff speak to this?
Records now.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, the, uh, the benefits that we've determined out of the registry, just from a, a jurisdictional scan, one would be that it would add a significant amount of, for lack of a better word, demographic data for planning to use to understand how the neighborhoods are made up from a, a rental unit, rental housing perspective versus a private, uh, perspective. Uh, it, it just would really add color to the, the really bare data that we do have currently for them to be able to make decisions, do growth planning, things like that. Uh, Director Agnew, or Commissioner Agnew could probably speak to more of that. The other piece I, I, I would like to say about the registry is that it would allow, uh, my team in particular, to focus their efforts. If indeed what council wants is more attention paid to rental housing, well, a registry would allow me to actually understand where those rental houses are and focus my efforts on whatever we want to talk about, education, outreach, uh, exterior inspections, uh, tenant interaction, however we want to call it. Uh, it, right now, the data is a little bit lacking. Uh, Commissioner Agnew may wish to speak a little bit more about the planning aspect.
Councillor Agnew?
Uh, thank you, and, and through you, Deputy Mayor. Um, Mr. Smith is absolutely correct. We certainly do have data that, and some of that is in the report, that identifies where we have, um, rental units throughout the city. But the data set isn't complete, particularly when we start to talk about undocumented units. And those are units that have been created primarily without building permits. So, some of the, some of the data we have, but it's really about getting that more fulsome picture of the units that aren't being picked up because they're not permitted. And therefore, it's difficult for impact to assess them or for them to show up in CMHC data. And we primarily find that in this one-to-four unit category for some of the reasons that some of the delegations tonight spoke to versus what we see in, in larger residential structures that, um, have a number of units associated with them or typically more, uh, professionally managed. And some of them are subject to other types of tools we have like site plan control under the Planning Act. So, they're regulated by way of a legal agreement. So, it's a way to, to address a bit of a gap that we have right now, um, on those undocumented units. And, and that is helpful for us from an overall growth planning perspective when we're trying to determine, uh, what we need for the long-term needs of the city. We first have to really understand what we currently have.
Councillor Tozo?
Thank you. How much cost would a registry be on an average landlord? If any?
Director Smith?
Uh, difficult to say. We'd have to cost it out. The, 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 the way we're currently kind of leaning towards it is that the, the registration process would probably, probably be through an online form of some sort, uh, just a, a couple of fill-in-the-blank kind of portions on that. So, from, from the perspective of, of processing, I mean, it would already be in the computer. We wouldn't have to be processing paper necessarily when we would receive this. So, I mean, that lessens the amount of staff time that's required. We'd have to do some explorations with our IT people just to see what kind of platform we could use. One suggestion that has been made is that we do use the Dash platform, which already exists. It's used very widely in, in kind of the, the building permit world so that we could perhaps adapt something right out of that. We already have the, the, the technology infrastructure to be able to do that. And then it would be a matter of having the appropriate level of staff time to be able just to have, uh, a look and, and, and look at the data and, and collate it and make sure that it's, uh, complete, that kind of idea. So, there would be a, a staff component to that. It remains to be seen if that could be absorbed in what we've got currently or if we would need more staff, like an administrator, a coordinator of some sort, to be able to assist us with that.
But the cost, you think, would probably be pretty minimal on landlords?
I, I would suggest, I mean, just gut feeling, it, it, it would probably take a staff member at least some portion of their time. So, allocate that out. The idea would be, uh, as has been mentioned a couple of times, that this would be low fee or no fee. Um, it is, I'll, I'll, I will note, though, it has also been suggested that since there is a certain value to this data to the city proper, that it could be contemplated and in an implementation plan that I would bring you further on in, into Q-three, that we may wish to invest in that and that, that consider that to be an investment so that we know our neighborhoods better and can make better planning decisions. So, that may remove some of the, the cost obligations from the landlords and keep it within the city just so that we can better develop our knowledge.
Councillor Tozo?
Yeah, just for clarification, this pilot of a registry is just in Kings Court, Rito, and in Sidney district to start with, correct?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, that is correct.
And if this doesn't work, you can come back to us and say, this isn't working, something's wrong here. We can retool, refine the policy. Is that correct?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, yes, that is correct.
And this would provide you, in your estimation, the tools you need in your toolbox to help enhance property standards and a potential gap that exists? Is that your, your understanding of what we, option one, provides?
Uh, through you, Deputy Mary, yes, that is correct. I will know where these rental properties are and we can take whatever outreach, action, whatever is required in order for us to try to make some efforts to improve the, the quality of that rental stock.
Thank you. So, a registry is a starting point. Um, let's not make what we want that's perfect. I was in favor of option two, at administrative policies be the enemy of the good. Um, we've heard from both landlords and tents tonight, either of which are happy with option one or option two or option three. The fact that both landlords and tents don't like this says to me that we're probably on our way to finding a good public policy considering that everybody's walking away a little bit unhappy. Um, I, because I think- I, because I think this impacts my district, because I think it will help people in my district, because I don't think it will penalize the good people who rent out secondary suites, because it will help with development, because it will help understand our neighborhoods better, because it's low cost. I am happy to support option one because we do need a starting point before we start regulation. Maybe one day we will get to license, fully licensing landlords and fully licensing secondary units. I don't think today we need to be there. This will help, I think, my district. And because of that, I'm going to encourage the rest of my fellow counselors to vote for option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tozo. Councilor Ridge.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you. So I think that this conversation, this very long conversation that we've been having this evening and at Administrative Policies, has brought up two really interesting points. So the first one is data, data collection. So just with regards to that, I mean, there's been quibbling and discussion this evening about the validity of data, how accurate it is. And so I would argue that, at the very least, moving forward with option one would be a good way to get a good dataset, which is something that we need for any implementation or policy development moving forward, much like Councilor Tozo said or Director Smith had mentioned. And the second, the second piece too is the, the human cost. So the human, the, the, the human effect. Some people have mentioned it this evening as anecdotes, but each of those anecdotes have been real personal experiences that have happened to someone. I mean, just looking at my time as a counselor with Kingstown District, half of the structural fires in the city happened in, in this district. There was a mother who rescued two children from a house fire in June, of which she was severely burned and her infant was burned as well. You can't just dismiss when fire codes are not followed and people are injured or they die, regardless of how the fire itself was started. You can't dismiss these things. And then when it comes to more minor anecdotes, such as what the students put forward, I lived through that. I lived through many, many terrible apartments. I remember literally waking up one night, looking out and seeing my cat on the kitchen counter and wondering why the, it felt like the cat was in my bed. It was a rat that I chewed through the wall in the middle of the night. And then when they opened up the wall the following day, they found dead rodents inside, including bats, for some reason. And so, you know, I was a young person. I didn't know where to go with regards to this. I didn't know that I could go to property standards. I basically told my landlord to get lost, I'm moving out. And they decided that that was okay for some reason. So anyways, I think that I too, like Councilor Tozo, would prefer to move forward with option two, but I think that option one is a very solid footing from a policy development and implementation perspective, moving forward, where we can get the information to make better decisions, where we can move forward, move forward. And if we have everything in front of us to make that better decision later on, that we want to, this program, then that's fine. If not, at the very least, then we have resources for planning. And I think that option one is very good, and I hope that you will support it. Thank you.
You, Councilor Ridge. Councilor Bone, you had your hand up? Did you still want to speak? Councilor Bone.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you. Yeah, we've definitely heard a lot tonight on, on both sides. I guess the first thing is, and maybe this is a question to Director Smith, but bad landlords will continue to be bad landlords. Good landlords will follow this. We know that. Good landlords will comply. I have no doubt about that. I'd say that's probably ninety-five plus percent. So we've got examples of bad landlords. We've heard from Councilor Ridge and some of these lived experiences, and, and nobody is debating the merits of those. I think the concern is, how do we actually deal with those bad landlords? So a registry will get the good ones. When the bad ones resist or don't comply or create a battle and decide to go to court or what have you, what burden on staff time will that be? And how is this tool any different? To me, it's just an information gathering tool. So how is this any different to actually address the issues of these few bad apples that seem to be apparently spoiling the whole bunch? Because I still don't see the tools here that are going to fix that. I see a lot of talk about it'll help, but I don't actually see how we're going to root them out. When we threw everything we had at some of them and still got almost no results, I just think at our level, we don't have it. So how, how is this going to change that?
Director Smith.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. I mean, interesting question, Councilor Bone. It's, it's, it's difficult to say. None of these plans actually give the enforcement team any more particular powers. Our powers already exist under the Property Standards Bylaw, which comes out of the Building Code Act, and we have some powers that we can draw out of the, out of the Municipal Act. So the question is, how do we deal with the bad landlords? Well, I would suggest we do deal with the bad landlords when we become aware of them. We, we, we had a number of, I would suggest blitzes last year where we dealt with problematic landlords and we did door knocks, we did outreach, and we were able to come out with some positive outcomes out of that particular level of interaction. What we're looking at through things like this, what, what is being suggested in option one, for instance, with the registry system, that will allow me and my team to hive down the numbers so that we can then focus our efforts and act more efficiently. Just from the census data, King's Court, Rito, and Sidney have eighty-five hundred private residences. And I cannot say with any level of certainty, and I believe Commissioner Agnew echoed this as well, how many of those eighty-five hundred private residences are actually rentals? We've got some idea through impact data, but with no level of certainty can I say what they are. A registry would allow me to potentially get some more certainty on that, focus the efforts of my officers to be able to go out, do exterior inspections, do door knocks, do education, flyer drops, that type of thing, with the hope that it is going to try to achieve breaking some of the barriers that previous delegations had mentioned, where people are afraid to make a phone call or they don't know who to make a phone call to or a complaint to. If I have an officer standing at the front door, smiling, providing good information to folks, they may be willing to make a complaint and may be willing to try to take that first step to try to make their rental property or their, their tenancy life a little bit better.
So if I heard, so if I heard you correctly, and, and this kind of strikes me, you know, very, I'm very concerned right now with what I just heard. Because what I just heard is that we're not just going to be dialing out the bad ones, but what potentially be happening is with this registry is there will be spot inspections of landlord properties where there is potentially no issue nor, nor any history of issue. It'll just be like, well, we know that that's a rental, so we're just going to go by and inspect it externally. And in my mind, that's kind of like, it's a little concerning and it reminds me sort of the short-term rental approach, which is we're going to paint you all with a bad brush until you've been proven innocent. And, and that to me is A, a waste of staff resources, and, and B, again, how does that address the bad apples? Because what it sounds like to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the tools that we have are not going to change. We've collected more data, great, but we already seem to know who the bad ones are, and we still don't seem to be able to do a whole heck of a lot to actually solve the bad apples in this bunch. So I still have not heard anything with, and I have no doubt option one's going to pass. You know, like, it's, 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 it was basically from my mind, the lesser of the three, but still, it doesn't solve the problem. What we're left here now is there was, there was three options provided and option one was the least of the three, so that's what we're all going for. But in the end, I still don't see how we're actually getting to the bad apples. That's my concern here. That's the concern of all the landlords and in this, and I believe that's concern of all the tenants. So are our property standards bylaws adequate to deal with the bad apples that are right there? Or do we simply lack the resources? That, that's my question.
Director Smith.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. A great question. So I mean, as part of this, as has been mentioned previously, we are looking at refreshing our property standards bylaw. It is last reviewed substantially probably in two thousand and fifteen. So things have progressed past that. We've got technology, we've got various other things, there's other best practices that we could bring into that. So that will, will aid to a certain degree in allowing us, the, the enforcement team to focus on issues. So I mean, that, that will work in and of itself. I think there are bad apples out there, to use your words, Councilor Bone. There are bad apples. We do take steps, we do have powers to be able to do them, and we do know who they are. I think also, though, there are other gradients of difficulties that people are facing in, in the rental accommodations, so not the ones that are, that are fire hazards or anything like that, but there are other people who are facing issues who are not getting them addressed because they don't know how to do it or they're, they're afraid to do it, as was evidenced by a number of the delegations tonight. I'm going to suggest to you that the ability for us to know where they are, to try to do friendly outreach with these individuals, to try to make them more comfortable in, in addressing their issue, and we may dissuade, dissuade is the wrong word, we may be able to clarify to them what some of these property standards are and that concerns that they had, they may understand that they're not actually something that can be addressed by the city. So I think there, there's a lot of opportunity to clarify what the property standards are, and we can provide information to assist in clarifying tenant responsibilities and landlord responsibilities, and, and just to make sure that there is good information out there so people are making good decisions. And if they're making good decisions, that if they need to make a complaint to us or to through the Residential Tenancies Act or whatever they, they have to do, they're able to do that, but at least with a background of information to make a solid and informed decision.
Commissioner Agnew, I saw your hand. Did you want to speak?
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. The only other thing I'd like to add is that one of the additional pieces that hasn't really been talked about with the, the registry is that if assembled properly, it provides a resource for tenants as well. So that if you're new to renting a property, as, as we find some people are, whether they're a post-secondary student or they're a young person coming into the market or someone with a change of circumstance that is renting for the first time, the idea with the registry is that if you're looking at renting a property, you would be able to contact the city to see if that property is actually on the rental registry. And in doing so, it could give you the confidence that it's, it's actually a documented property that has had some level of assessment, whether it's through a building permit for its original creation. So that in itself, again, empowering people to know, to have confidence before they rent something. If they're looking at a property that's not on the registry, they would be, be able to identify that for us. Again, that's another piece of information about an undocumented property that hasn't come forward through the process. So these are all additional things for the renters as well, in addition to some of the other important pieces associated with this option about updating our bylaws and including some additional options for targeted enforcement that potentially, at this point, they're really not spoken to in enough detail in the bylaw. And as Director Smith has said, we haven't looked at this bylaw for some years, so certainly need to, to make sure that it's current and it's as focused on health and safety as possible and specifying things in greater detail where, where maybe that's, the detail's not there right now.
Councilor Bone.
Yeah, so that's starting to sound more and more like licensing and less and less like a registry, where basically the registry vets people. So I mean, registration, licensing, certain, they kind of sound pretty synonymous. I guess my next question would be, it really seems that what we have here is a lack of education on, on tenants' responsibilities and, and, and their rights. And, and ultimately, that is something where we are partly to blame as a city. It doesn't seem, from what we've heard, that that's easily accessible information. So that's, that's an easy fix. And, and part of that is, is, you know, that the fact that a lot of the jurisdiction doesn't actually rest with us as a city. So again, we're wading into other levels of rights and responsibilities. Director Smith, just quite clearly, yes or no? Without a registry or licensing, do you have the tools currently to effectively do your job to identify and, and police the bad landlords that are right there? Without a registry, do you have those tools right now? Yes or no?
Thirty seconds. Director Smith, go ahead.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I do.
Thank you. So a registry is therefore not necessary, and it's just going to be an additional burden that is not necessary at this time. So although I think option one's going to pass, we've gotten here and we shouldn't even be here. And we're waiting into something we really shouldn't open. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bone. Councilor Ostrah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go ahead of anybody.
No, you're, you're next.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I've come in some of the vein of Councilor Bone as well. I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm really troubled by what I've just heard. And though I appreciate it, because that's why I was going to ask you as well, Mr. Smith, because that's what I heard at the, at the APC or Administrative Policy Conference Two, a conference or the meeting. So I'm just trying to regroup here, so bear with me for a second. Because I really need to know what is the difference between registered and licensed? And it seems to me that we're changing on the fly here a little bit. And that's really why I was going to consider moving a deferral to give time to flesh out option one, which is better, in my opinion, than two and three, because I wanted, you know, a licensed-like kind of approach. But I'm hearing now we're, 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 we're going full steam ahead with basically door-to-door searches of every apartment that gets registered and does it meet that? And we'll get a, a data, a data website for, for, for potential tenants and all that. And so I think that that's really dangerous. And I don't think that is anywhere near what council was expecting or when the council called this, you know, whatever, when we called for this consideration of licensing. So that's a very big concern to me, especially when we have heard more than once, we can accomplish this without licensing. What we just heard was amazing. You know, we heard the thousands of, of students that are at risk supposedly by, by bad, you know, inadequate housing, and we aren't even going to touch that. We are not even going to touch that with this endeavor, okay? We're talking thousands and thousands and thousands of units that are going to be inspected and that, we actually have two sides of the coin, two frontal attacks here. If this is a warfare game, we have two attacks. One, we want you to do. One, we want to solve the problem with property standards and carry out an effective program and equip you, Mr. Smith, equip you for that. That's council's commitment. Nowhere did council say you needed to go and into the background twenty-five, thirty-five, forty years ago, people bought a house in nineteen ninety-seven and they had an apartment in there and it's worked fine with everybody, everybody possible's lived in there, had a great start before they bought a house and no one's ever complained. And now we're going to knock on the door and make sure that everything, or shoot, tell me, yes or no? Is that what we're going to do if they register one twelve sunny side road and, or wherever you want to go and say, we're going to check your unit now and make sure that meets standards and never had a complaint in forty years? What are we going to do? Where are we going with this?
Director Smith.
Thank you through you, Deputy Mayor. So from the motion that we've received here, I am taking that council wants enforcement to pay more attention to rental licensing or to rental properties, pardon me, to rental properties. One mechanism for me to do that is to actually know where the rental properties are. If you want me to pay more attention to the rental properties and to try to augment the health and safety of those particular properties, there will have to be some level of interaction between the enforcement officers and the tenants. That's just the way it goes because of the nature of the beast in accessing properties, in trying to overcome these concerns that have been raised about complaints, people being afraid of making complaints. We are going to have to do some element of that. This is not levels necessarily of inspections. It is going to be, at the very least, some sort of outreach, I would suggest, which will be further developing in an implementation plan for further review by council in Q three. That, that would be the idea. These are, these are just initial thoughts on where we could potentially go with an option-one registry kind of program. That's what I'm looking at right now.
Okay, well, that's, that's interesting to me, and I thank you for that because it, it seems, I don't know how you're going to find enough time personally for that. I, that's a massive, massive effort for me to, to see that being anywhere near successful. But I don't think that that's what we intended. Is there, what we, we, I would want to know, before I could support anything, I would want to know in, in greater detail. It seems to me it's evolving right in front of us. It seems to me it's evolving right in front of us of what exactly you're going to do, and I'm not even sure you know what you're going to do in all respect, because it's it's, this is going to be data that you are just going to discover, and then we just heard tonight that this will be something that we're going to hand out to in some list to to tenants out there, I I don't think we really actually know, and I'm feeling very uncertain at this time that uh of what your actual focus is going to be, I don't think you've, you you have not convinced me in all due respect that we're we're going to uh get uh get at to what we just saw tonight, I don't see how that's going to happen. So yeah, I I I I I will still probably move deferral, because now this is not a healthy road, this is never going to be successful. We are, we are heading down a a um a a difficult road, if that's what uh we're going to do. Can I have a a answer to that question then? The difference between registered and licensed, is there actually any difference?
Director Smith? Oh, Commissioner Agnew, sorry.
Uh thank you, and through you Deputy Mayor, if I may, and then Mr. Smith can certainly add anything. So a couple of things, um Counselor, and 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 because this issue has been discussed since twenty seventeen, just a little bit of going back on some of the direction. So originally, staff received direction many years ago to explore residential residential licensing program and to come back to council that had an option for that with an implementing bylaw, which was done. A decision on that was deferred. That was a previous council. This council specifically, there was a motion that staff received last December, asking us, again, to look at a residential licensing program to bring back something that provided the benefits and the drawbacks of the options, including up to not doing anything with the status quo option. So that was the direction we were following and bringing you back options, we chose to bring back options that showed an increasing amount of of effort or things that we could start with from something that's more basic with Option One to something that would be more of a full-fledged option, which would be Option Three. That was also reinforced for us through the process of the development of your strategic plan, which has a specific initiative that says bring to us a residential licensing bylaw. So again, staff are here for that reason, trying to deliver what we had understood to be your direction. We are happy to take your direction with whatever option or no option, depending on how the debate goes tonight. But Counselor Osterhoff, to your question more specifically, there's a difference between a registry where people are providing very basic information, just about the municipal address of their location of their rental unit versus something that would require more of a regulatory approach and things that we would be looking at before a license is issued. So something is more of an information-based, the secondary approach with a full licensing program is the city having to say certain conditions have been met, and then based on that, we're issuing you a license, so it's a much more fully realized version of um of a program of documenting that unit, not just knowing where it is, but saying whether it's legal and safe. A registry is a first pass at being able to actually identify the geography of where the unit is and giving us a path to understanding that, a registration, that's the registration, the license itself involves the additional steps that are in the report itself, that would then involve potential inspections depending on the history associated with with the file, and then different directions, so it gets complicated, but certainly to Director Smith's point, um all of these options would have us bringing you an additional more detailed implementation strategy, whatever direction you give us this tonight so that you have a chance to see that before further action is taken. So again, tonight is, let us know if these options make sense to you, if they don't, if you don't like them, we don't have to do anything. If they do, we can bring you back further information that has the detail teased out in greater specification before you can make a final decision.
Thank you, um Deputy Mayor. I just think that we we don't have enough information, that I think it's an incomplete recommendation.
Thirty seconds.
We we have before us Option One, Two, and Three, we've chosen One, I was impressed with the administrative policy commit, you know, reviewing that and going to One, but now it's still only a few lines on a page, it's incomplete uh recommendation for us to make that, to make that, so I would like to um request um um an opportunity to defer uh this for a time. And uh I think
Time is up, I'm checking with the clerk.
So we we need a second or Counselor Osterhoff, and we would also, okay, Counselor Bone, we will also, they need the uh where are you deferring it to?
Yeah, I can, I can give you
And and when?
Yeah, I would like to defer this to administrative policies uh for um their uh the meeting in uh April, give it time to for them. And the purpose for the um is for them to complete the picture for us as council to um to understand better what the direction they would be going. I can, I can print something out, if you give me a minute, you need something more clear. And I feel that we are heading down a road that will not lead to success with this this particular and more options is what I really would like to
Just give us one sec.
So are we asking for further details regarding implementation of Option One as well as additional options?
Yes.
As well as additional options. I guess that's fine.
Yeah, I could add to that, and can I add to that or no?
Sure, if you have.
I have another line here.
His time is up on the original.
The cost options for for staff to utilize existing opportunities and resources.
Resources.
To increase tenant and landlord knowledge of the responsibilities. And avenues for assistance.
So I just now, let me try further details regarding implementation of Option One in the report as well as options.
Mister Deputy Clerk, are you going to be able to put that up on the screen, just so we can see the wording?
Yes, I just need one moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Just verifying how long as well as five minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer, do you want me to read that? Okay, moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Bone. That Clause One of Report Number Twenty-two received from the Administrative Policies Committee be deferred and referred back to the Administrative Policies Committee on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. With staff to provide further details regarding implementation of Option One in Report Number AP twenty-three, one zero zero four, as well as options for utilizing existing resources to increase tenant and landlord knowledge of their responsibilities and avenues for assistance. Okay, Counselor Osterhoff, I feel like you've spoken to it. Is that?
Yeah, well, I guess if we're all going to begin our minute, um I think that's, this is the beginning, I don't, again, I'm not uh all that gifted at uh this kind of thing, but I just want to communicate that what we've received needs needs to be fleshed out more, for a better word, uh but for a better word, and I would like to see us be able to uh get that from staff and with options, so that we can really know the roads they're going down and not be surprised at the end um of of it all and say we didn't. We have thousands and thousands of landlords that are actually in the affordable housing market. And if they're forced to register, then um it gives, it it puts the affordable housing market at risk without knowing it, so uh I'm very much concerned about that.
Thank you. Counselor Tozo.
Thank you Deputy Mayor through you, this is actually what Option One is. What Option One is that they're going to take this policy and come back to administrative policies in Q three. So you've just put a deferral, is exactly what Option One is. Uh Counselor Osterhoff, so I, my recommendation would be, we just defeat this, vote for Option One, and if they come back in Q three and it sucks, we vote it down. But that's like, this is just Option One, like, this is just what we're voting for Option One. And like, there's so many checks along the way that we can vote this down, um so I'm going to call the question. Sorry, I can't, during a deferral? What, I can't, okay, so I'd like to vote to call the question.
Okay, so Counselor Tozo can move to call the question, but he needs a seconder. Okay, Counselor Shades, so
So just as a, just as a reminder, uh motion to call the question is is kind of a old-fashioned or colloquial term, the proper term is a motion to close debate, so Counselor Tozo and Counselor Shades effectively have a motion on the floor, requires a two-thirds vote to pass to say we're going to, if this passes with two-thirds, we're going to vote on the motion to defer. No big
Okay.
Yes.
So just as a point of procedure, does that supersede then the deferral request?
It gets us
Okay, okay, okay.
Next thing we will do is vote on the deferral with any, without any further discussion.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, yeah.
In the rabbit hole, so we are voting, two-thirds will make it pass to basically stop the debate and move to the vote for deferral, okay? You understand?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Keep your hands up, please, that carries with Counselor's Bone, Osterhoff.
Two-thirds, four of us are off.
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're totally right, my apologies, so that fails uh at two-thirds, right?
Wait, it's exactly two-thirds. So it does pass, then I
Yeah.
It passes, yeah. Okay, so that passes with the two-thirds vote, so that means we are back to the amendment. The for all, sorry, it's late. We're back to the deferral, and
Vote.
We are having the vote on the deferral, so again, the deferral is to bring it to Admin Policies in April. Okay, so all those in favor?
Of of the
The deferral motion.
For, all those in favor of deferral? Opposed? Did we get everybody voting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We did not, yeah.
Okay. And opposed, sorry, in favor was Counselors Osterhoff, Bone, and McLam. Okay, thank you. All right, so back to the main motion, Counselor Osterhoff, you had your time, uh next on my list is Counselor Hassan, you have five minutes.
Thank you, uh um Deputy Mayor. I have a presentation, uh I heard my colleagues, a very valid point from Counselor Bone, um Counselor Osterhoff, it was good points made from both parties at the presentation, uh that allegation. We have spent two meetings almost discussing this issue, we have one full meeting, the Administrative Policy meeting. We discuss um all of this matter. When we see clearly the both party has very valid points, a bad apple, that uh of bad tenants out there and bad landlord out there. The current uh tools we have at the city level, they did not probably work well or was not force enough to deal with this such issues. And I'm agree with that, might this motion and this amendment or this new bylaw will not or registry will not resolve all the issues. But as a, as a counselor, as a representative, but what I, what I see now, the motion, the option number one is giving win-win situation to both parties, giving something to the both. And as a city, we also getting some new options to uh work on this uh long overdue issue, I believe that. And we don't have the time, we have more important issue than that. It is also important, but we have more important issue to discuss and spend our valuable time in in the council instead just back and forth, back back and forth this one. I think, and I I urge with the my colleagues, um the first question to Mr. Smith or um Commissioner um Agnew, that if we remove the registration fee for the this time period of uh whatever be the under the order fee, as as a pilot project, but many, we place the registry mandatory, but without any fee, is that that can be possible?
Director Smith?
Through you Deputy Mayor, I mean, of course, that is something that we could propose through the implementation plan to you, whether you want to absorb some or all of the cost of a registration fee for the period of the pilot program. That is, that is something that we can explore and present to you uh when we come back.
So I understand from today's conversation from the colleagues, from the uh also the both parties. Uh I think I made a demand that we waive the fee, but we keep the registration mandatory for all the landlords as the pilot project, and see, and the city will get the tools, what you're describing, that you will have more um um not the power, but you will have more resources to recognize where the properties are, so in this way, we can have the registry, but we can waive the uh financial burden from the landlord, which they are worried about uh in in this presentation that they gave us today. So I may ask the proposed amendment to um to just waive the fee, but how how is it going to work, if we can waive the fee but keep the registration?
Um, okay, Commissioner Agnew.
Uh thank you, and through you, so depending on, you know, the direction of council wants to support this, Counselor Hassan certainly is part of the implementation strategy we would bring to you um for final approval, we could definitely ensure that includes an option that would be no cost for the rental registry, based on tonight's discussion.
Counselor Hassan?
Or we will or I can um wait down the road to, well, I want to come back and or we can move it for um whatever, and I I think I urge my colleagues to vote for Option Number One, let us get over with it. And give something to both parties and our city staff as well to work on it, or for the better future of the tenants and find with good landlords and good tenants for our our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hassan. Anyone else want to speak? Counselor Glenn, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you Deputy Mayor, um I'm going to start with some questions. Um because I think one of the biggest things that's happening here is we actually don't have enough information.
Right.
Um so I actually, you know, we didn't get to debate the deferral piece. Um I didn't like the particular wording of the deferral, I thought we needed something different. Um and I think it was unfortunate that we didn't get a chance to address it. Um so a couple of questions, just to get started here, in the scan of um the licensing attempts that have been made by other jurisdictions, um would you say that it it's really fair to look at them, given that they are in their infancy and that some of them started during the pandemic?
Director Smith?
Through you Deputy Mayor, uh valid points, Counselor Glenn, it was a challenging time. Uh very, very difficult to kind of parse out, you know, what pandemic-related effects this may have. What I can say is that I have not seen any analysis, one way or the other, of the benefits or detriments out of a, out of a a registry or or a licensing program, I have not seen that analysis done.
Okay, so safe to say that we don't know. Okay, so um oh, okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Agnew. hybrid is really fun.
I don't think she, think she's talking to somebody off camera.
Okay.
Sorry, back to you, Counselor Glenn.
Okay. So what is the resource difference between Options One and Two from the original uh report that came to Admin Policy? And I mean resources in terms of uh staff resources.
Director Smith?
Yeah, through you Deputy Mayor, uh again, that that has to be further fleshed out in the uh in the implementation plan. But in very general terms, I would suggest that as you go from Option One to Two to Three, you're probably looking at a doubling of the staff resources that be would be required, so for Option One, I mean So for option one, I mean, it is a registry, we would probably also need another officer or two to be able to, to make it work. So we're, we're looking probably at a minimum of three, but again, I've got to further develop that. And then as you go up the, the chain or up the options, again, probably by magnitude doubling as, as we go.
Councillor Glenn, I'm sorry to interrupt for a second. Um, it is 10:54, so if we would like to continue, we need a motion to extend, please. Moved by councillor Ossanek, seconded by councillor Shades. To complete the agenda, to be clear. Okay, moved by councillor Ossanek, seconded by councillor Shades, all those in favor? Opposed? And that carries, thank you councillor Glenn, I apologize, back to you.
Okay, so then to be clear, we're not sure about that and, um, option two, of course, is only in two districts, so I do want to emphasize that. So again, unsure of the cost. Um, there have been concerns, um, about costs to the landlords. And again, do we know what those costs are going to be?
Commissioner Agnew?
Uh, thank you and through you, I'm happy to provide some comments and, and then Director Smith can follow up as well. Um, you know, it's not something where we can identify that very specifically on a consistent um, basis for every property, because every property has its own unique issues. So if we're just looking at a property that's compliant, um, and if we had a no cost system, as, as per the discussion that councillor Hassan just led, you really would be looking at minimal cost or no cost at all. However, if we're talking about a property where the units were created, but without any type of building permits, if there's fire issues. So it really could be a range, it's difficult for us to say right off the top, it's going to be this, or it's going to be that. Um, certainly depending, there's a lot of things that depend on the history associated with the units themselves to determine when they were created, if there was a process that was followed, that allowed inspections. And again, so you're looking at that versus the history of what building code was in effect at that time, that gives permissions for those things. So there's, there's work that staff has to do to look at that before we would determine how to address any type of deficiency. So I think the best answer is it would range. I think certainly what we could try to do as part of a future report is maybe get a better handle on that of what some of those costs could potentially be um, ballpark, but it's very difficult for us just to say right off the top, because it could vary so much from property to property.
Okay, so suffice it to say again, we don't have enough information. Um, so what I've heard so far is that councillors Ridge and councillor Tozo both actually preferred option two, but don't feel that we can get that to go ahead. Councillor Boom doesn't see option one as a fix. We've been debating about good versus bad landlords and the reality is they're on a spectrum. So in terms of moving forward with licensing, it's not just a few bad apples, it's people on a spectrum and we're recognizing that. Um, we've had talk about this is just a lack of education. Um, but I think that's, you know, given what we've heard to this evening, not accurate. We've heard a number of individuals express that they are fearful to come forward. And so we're gonna stay in this situation. I sense that there's impatience around here because we are going late and I understand that. But I would ask you to reconsider where we are right now, because this is important. And this isn't just, there are other more important things. Each issue before us is important to constituents that we represent. So with respect, let's give it that consideration. Um, I think if we had the proper tools, we might actually have done something about this, so I'm actually gonna put another motion to defer on the tape.
Let's just give us a moment.
Oh, we just need to know the specific, so.
So I'd like to defer this to admin policy. I think the April meeting, as councillor Osterhoff had originally suggested, is reasonable. To obtain more detail on the options that were provided, because I don't think we could consider them otherwise. And to provide other options if possible.
Point of order?
Point of order councillor Tozo?
Isn't this the exact same thing that we voted on previously?
No.
No? Sorry, how is it not?
Because this is asking for detail on all of the previously provided options, the detail that we do not have to make the decision. A lot of stuff has been put forward about costs, we don't have that information. Everybody keeps talking about the lack of data, the lack of information, the lack of detail. So we're not making a good decision.
Can we get the previous motion that was defeated in this motion and see if there's substantive difference on this? And I'd like the ruling of the chair, if this is end of order, because we just voted on this.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, so I can put, I can't put them both on at the same time, but I can put one and then the other.
Yeah, thank you.
Bear with me one moment, but just share for Zoom as well. There's the first one. Then we'll go to the next one. Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. They are really close. Um, I think, I think they are different enough that I'll allow it. Um, but I do recognize.
Well, point of order, I didn't second this. Point of order, I didn't, I didn't second this.
You know, that's okay. Okay, so we have a motion by councillor Glenn, seconded by councillor Ossanek. Councillor Tozo?
I'd like to call the question.
Oh, not yet, please.
Oh, okay, so I've changed it to a second.
Okay. So.
Point of order?
On to the chair.
One sec, please.
It's identical.
No, 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 yours was just option. This says, and the options, and like one, two, three, and other options.
The other options failed.
No, like it could be something between one and two.
No.
Other options.
We can discuss them.
Okay. I know this is tough, thank you for your patience.
Okay, so there's a, there's a motion to defer on the floor.
That's where we're at.
Right, so we can speak to it now, right? Sixty seconds?
Yeah, so it was moved by councillor Glenn, so councillor Glenn has a mo, a minute to say.
Very quickly, I will ask you not to call the question, because fundamentally debate is part of this democracy. But please don't do that. And what I'm going to say is this is substantially different, because we voted at admin policy without enough information on all of the options. This gives us the opportunity to get more information on all of those options and for staff to come back with any other potential options that might address what we're trying to accomplish. So let's get that information, let's make a good decision and not be doing a runaround and throwing crumbs at a very difficult and certainly serious situation in soon.
Thank you councillor Shades.
I have a question for staff, please. What is the plan that option one was passed? Are you wanting to implement a program and come back with, to council with cost and more information in Q3? Is that the initial plan?
Can people ask questions within the deferral time? No, sorry councillor Shades, you have a minute to speak to the deferral. You can't ask staff questions at this time, that'll come, that's the main motion, yeah.
Well, I, I take it from the head nods that confirms my, my question is that the plan is that we give staff an option and then they take it back and determine a plan, which they come back to us in Q3 with other options, which we can decide we like or don't like, or add more things. What we're doing right now is getting to the weeds, which people here have said before, we need to stay out of the kitchen. So right now, we're getting to the kitchen. We need to give staff correction, which option one is. So I'm voting no to the deferral. And voting yes to option one.
Okay, thank you councillor Shades, councillor Boom.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor and through you. Unfortunately, I'm actually gonna have to challenge the, the ruling of the chair, that this is not the same as the the previous deferral option. They, they read the same, I'm in full agreement with councillor Tozo, that this is, this is essentially and fundamentally the same as what we've already voted on, and we're just spinning ourselves in circles now. So I guess I would call the vote for a challenge of the chair on that ruling. And unfortunately, I feel like we're just re passioning.
That's fine, thanks councillor Boom, so, uh, councillor Boom wants to make a motion to challenge the chair, he needs a seconder. Great councillor Tozo.
He gets a minute to explain, you get a minute, then we vote, so councillor Boom, he gets a minute to explain his case.
Thanks. You have a minute.
Thank you and through you, I'll try to be brief here, I know it's late. So e- essentially, I mean, I, I just feel that fundamentally, these, these two deferral motions are one, one in the same, they are far too close. Um, there, there's very little difference. I think if you were to show this to a person in the public, they would agree completely with councillor Tozo. They are essentially one in the same. Adding a few more words like, well, options on everything, like that's, that's, I think staff's interpretation also, we could question them, would be that they are essentially the same. And, and, uh, you know, I'm kudos to the chair, uh, you know, I think you've done an amazing job, this is definitely a challenging situation. But I don't, I don't think, I don't think that these are fundamentally different deferral motions, I think they're one in the same. And for that reason, I feel like we're spinning our wheels on this. And, uh, and I think, and I think we need to overturn, overturn that ruling unfortunately, because they're just too close. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Boom. Um, okay, so they are really close, I, I don't disagree with you, it's tough call, could go either way. I think if I had chosen the other way, probably there would be arguments the other way around, and that's okay. Um, I think that while they are very similar, I think they are different enough in that the second deferral is looking for options on all three items, whereas the personal and specific just to option one. Um, so I think that the first deferral was closer to what option one is actually asking for. It was basically the same thing as the motion in front of us saying, bring us back details on whatever option we direct, in this case it's option one. Whereas the second deferral is basically asking for more information for the whole report. So that's where I see the difference. Um, I'll leave it to you to make your decision. All right, so with that, it is a majority to overturn the chair's decision, no one else speaks to this.
So yes means to overturn?
Thank you, yes. So if you vote yes, you want to overturn this ruling, which means this deferral is no longer on the table. If you vote no, it means you think that the deferral is fine and you would like to continue this discussion and we will vote on it. Okay? So, I have to think of how I'm voting. But, okay, thank you, very much. All those in favor? I'm letting my clerks count here. Okay, and all those opposed? Two, three. Okay, so that carries seven, five councillors Glenn, McLaren, Stephen, Ossanek, Osterhoff, opposed. So now, where are we?
We're back to main law.
Thank you, we're back to the main motion and councillor Glenn, you still have timed, you still have, it is a minute thirty-two left. I will reset my thing.
Okay, thank you.
I got you, all right.
All right, so through you Deputy Mayor. Um, I think that we're trying to rush this decision, quite frankly. Um, I think it was very clear that none of us really think that option one is what we want. But unfortunately, that's where we sit and I can tell where the winds seem to be blowing around this table. Um, I really had hoped that people would, despite the late hour and despite everything else, take a breath and give this consideration. It is important. Um, I'm gonna have to vote for option one, because otherwise we walk away with nothing, and I think that's a shame. But I really feel that we didn't give this full enough consideration, that we made a decision without enough information. And that's never good. Um, we heard from people here who were desperate for us to do more. And we're not gonna do that. Instead, we decided that we would, you know, support some of their worst fears. Um, and I understood why some people decided they didn't want to do licensing at all, because they felt they didn't have enough information on how intrusive it would be, how costly it would be. It's really difficult to make a wise
Thirty second.
And good decision without that information. We all purport to want that. Um, and so I had hoped that we would actually reach for that. Um, so as I said, I'll support option one, because that's where we are now. And hopefully, um, what we can see is that this will come back to us and perhaps we can do more. Uh, but at this point in time, um, I'm going to make it very clear, because my constituents need to hear from me, that I don't think it's sufficient. And they have my support for doing more as we move forward.
Thank you councillor Glenn. Um, councillor Ossanek?
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, so this has been around for a long time, like I think over ten years ago, we had the first debate. And when there was the question earlier tonight as to like, what other cities have done this, are they all new, or have they been around for a long time? Yeah, Waterloo, Waterloo was one of our, you know, um, yeah, Waterloo has licensing like over ten years ago. And here we are, all this time, all these years later, still afraid to try it, we're too afraid to try it. So what I had hoped would happen at admin policy would be option two, but maybe then we make some exemptions, we make it a bit lighter. So I was hoping that at admin policy, we would have done option two with amendments to make it more in between option one and option two, which is why also I wanted that deferral, so that we could try to get options from staff that were kind of closer. Like if someone is renting out their primary residence, so they're living in one half of the house, but they're renting out the basement or some part of the house to a tenant, I think they could be exempt from licensing, maybe even exempt too from registry. So that's one thing I was hoping for, um, like thank you to the public for providing a hundred and eighty pages of like all of their comments, one comment in there was really good and it was to, um, implement a face system like two years, only focusing on fire safety and building code. And then we could work up to, you know, other things. And, um, also, that's what I hope to have achieved by doing, you know, like an option two light. But whatever, I'll support option one for this. But I think the most telling thing that we've heard tonight is the president of this, like, mature students association, who is trying to become a doctor, and what did we do at the last council meeting? We put one million dollars towards trying to recruit doctors. And the reputation that Queens has, which was even back in my day, back in nineteen ninety-one, was the reputation of the student ghetto. And it's so obvious that the ghetto, you know, exists. And, um, and now it's discouraging students, once they graduate from staying in Kingston, and in this case, doctors. We have the medical stu, uh, school and we just heard that, you know, some medical students, because of what they're experiencing as tenants, don't want to stay in Kingston, and that's tragic. So we'll do option one and hopefully we can work up to a licensing program. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ossanek, um, next up is councillor Ennis.
Deputy Mayor, through you. Um, I asked a number of questions at, um, administrative policies, some of which I was happy with, some of which I was not, uh, in getting the answers. Option one is a start and the way I read, I guess I'll start by saying we need something. Um, I want to start with that right off the hop. I've got students from both campuses, St Lawrence, Queens. I've got a number of renters of my districts, uh, that are not large buildings, they're smaller buildings, towns, homes. And we need something to start somewhere. This option one provides the start. It gives staff a chance to build a framework. If we don't like the framework, if we think it's needing more, then we can, we can throw some amendments at, uh, and that will happen in Q3. But it's like any draft, you need to have a draft in front of you and then you can start amending from there. So I, option one, option one is the one I will be supporting, um, knowing that I'll be looking for, for potentially further items at the Q3. For council, and I'll leave it.
Thank you councillor Ennis, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Councillor Chaney?
Um, so. Just to clarify, I guess we all know this now, uh, we're just gonna get information back, so whether it would have been deferred for more information or not, we would have gotten more information about option one and what you're gonna come back with, correct? And I feel like.
Commissioner Agnew, sorry, Counselor Chinani?
Yes, thank you, that's correct, and through you. The, all the recommendations have us coming back with that detailed implementation plan that would include timing, cost, resources, all of those pieces for you to have a look at before a final decision is made on any of the options that are in the report this evening.
Counselor Chinani?
Um, I also like Counselor Hassan said about, uh, making it no cost. But maybe another option, kind of a hybrid of that, would be you make it no cost for a certain period of time, and then after a certain date, there is a cost, and that way you get more, you might get more, um, people wanting to do it before it costs than anything, uh, just a thought. Um, um, I, I feel like there has been a lot of discussion, it's been around since two thousand seventeen. Different iterations, so I, I feel there's been a lot of discussion. And I think that option one is probably the best option to start with. Now we can see if it works or not, if we need to do more, or if it, if what we have already is enough. Well, I think option one was the, our, our best choice.
Almost everyone has spoken. Uh, Counselor Shaves, you have not spoken on this main motion, you are up, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, apparently I don't have a question anymore, considering Mr. Counselor Chinani answered my question that I want, that I asked during the deferral. Um, thank you. So I'll keep this somewhat brief. Um, I think, you know, I'll agree that there are a number of concerns with a number of rental units, which are substandard due some or all following radical, rodent infestation, mold, lack of repairs, and fire violations, just to name a few. I would like to remind everyone, the fires within the past year, which has already been mentioned, where lives were lost. Fires which units did not meet code. Fires could have been prevented if this program was in place, and therefore in turn could have saved lives. During admin policies, it was stated option three appeared to be like a thickness such as number two of fly problem. I add option two was like taking a baseball bat to the solution, the situation. Director Smith has confirmed this option gives him amnesty, the tools to make this pilot work. And as mentioned, is coming back to council in Q three with more detail than everyone's asking for. The purpose of this program is to target the bad landlords and improve the standard of living of renters without having good landlords as collateral damage. I would also like to bring up our recent discussions surrounding the ending of the sleeping cabin program. There was a lot of discussions, debates surrounding the substandard living conditions of cabins. And it was unfair to make these residents live in these conditions. Are not the residents living in substandard rental units not afford the same condition, consideration? You gave the residents of sleeping cabins, I believe they do. This is a good start to this end game, and I'm going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaves. We are at the point where it is time to call the votes. So what we have before us, just as a reminder, we have option one as amended. Time to call the votes, so all those in favor? You opposed? That carries Counselor Osterhoff and Counselor McLaren opposed. Okay. We have report number twenty-three from the municipal, I can say that word, Accessibility Advisory Committee.
So moved by Counselor Tozo, seconded by Counselor Chinani, that report twenty-three from the municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Thank you, we have two items, would any li- anyone like anything separated? None, okay, call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed, that carries, thank you. We have one information report, report on real estate transactions completed from July first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, under bylaw number twenty sixteen dash one eight nine. Anyone have questions, comments? None, we're moving on. Onto miscellaneous business, all right. Moved by, we have three of them, sorry. Number one, moved by Counselor Tozo, seconded by Counselor Chinani, that the resignation of Janice Willby from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received with regret. Item two, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Ridge, that as requested by Latre Lawson, réseau de soutien à l'immigration, vingt-quatre femmes, le laisse de l'enquête. City Council proclaimed the month of February twenty twenty-four to be mois de l'histoire des noirs de miel banquette in the city of Kingston. And item number three, moved by Counselor Glenn, seconded by Counselor Chinani, that the following representatives to the post-secondary working group be affirmed. Craig Maru, Queens University Administrative Representative for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Ross McMillan, St. Lawrence College Administrative Representative for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Victoria Mills, Queens University Alma Mater Society Representative for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Tony Hugh, Queens University Society Graduate and Professional Students Representative for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Emily Cloche, St. Lawrence College Student Association Representative for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Alex Legnini, landlord, property manager representative for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. We have no new motions, are there any notices of motion? None. Madam Clerk, can we have the minutes, please?
Certainly, moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Ms. Osterhoff. The minutes of special city council meeting number four dash twenty twenty-four held Janu- January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and city council meeting number five, twenty twenty-four, held Tuesday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. There are a number of documents and communications we are deceiving, um, is there any other business? Counselor Tozo?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through you. Uh, I'd just like to thank you for doing such an excellent job of chairing this meeting. It was not, I think, what we expected. Uh, it was long, uh, but you handled it like a pro, and kudos to you for chairing an excellent meeting, good job.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Bohm, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you. Uh, Counselor Tozo, you literally took the words right at my, at my. Um, kudos, great, great job, uh, definitely a difficult meeting, and, uh, have a great night, everybody. This was definitely a tough one, and, uh, I know we've all got our hearts in the right places in trying to do the, the best for our constituents, so have a great night, cheers.
Thank you, Counselor Bohm, and I'll just add one thing, uh, thanks to staff for your flexibility and to counselors and delegations, like this was a flip tonight, and everybody handled it with grace, and, uh, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have bylaws, please?
Moved by Counselor Hassan, seconded by Counselor Bohm, bylaws one through five be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed, that carries.
Moved by Counselor Hassan, seconded by Counselor Bohm, bylaws two through five be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed, that carries. Need a motion to vote. Counselor Ridge, seconded by Counselor Tozo, all those in favor? Raise your hand, Paul.
I thought we'd done my.